Make sure your mics are on.
Got it.
So Red is on?
Yeah. The Plymouth Township Planning Commission meeting will come to order at 7:01. Secretary, please call roll.
Kendra Barberina is here. Dennis Sabolski.
Here.
Bob Ostendorf is excused. John Itzel.
Here.
Bob Dorchevitz.
Here.
Keith Postel.
Here.
Bill Pratt is excused.
Okay, and is there a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda? There's no additions or deletions?
Motion to approve.
Support. Move by Commissioner Pratt in support of I Commissioner Dorchevitz to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting of June 19?
Motion to approve.
If there's. Move by Commissioner Postel. I won't say Pratt because he always does it. And supported by Commissioner Itzel. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. This is the time for public comment, so if there's anyone here that wishes to speak to the commission on any non-agenda item, anything that is not on the agenda. Yes, sir, if you'd come up to the podium and give us your name and address if you wish.
Eric Hurlins, 46830 Betty Hill, in the Glenview neighborhood, near Beck and North Territory. Hi, everybody. Based on my professional experience and personal research, I wanted to share a few ideas that I think this planning commission should consider incorporating into the draft 2025 master plan. As a licensed engineer, I spend my workdays helping municipalities here in southeast Michigan upgrade existing infrastructure or plan new facilities. In my spare time, I enjoy reading about new and upcoming transportation systems and technologies. Some of the ideas I will share come from the M. report entitled Michigan Mobility 2045, which lays out our state's long-range plan at michiganmobility.org. Other ideas come from the Michigan Economic Council Corporation, which now includes an Office of Future Mobility and Electrification. I've read their 2020 report and I would recommend viewing it at michiganbusiness.org. My recommendation is to expand the Goals and Objectives section of the 2025 master plan to include three things. First, encouraging more public-use electric vehicle charging stations. Second, encouraging local adoption of autonomous transportation systems. And third, encouraging more solar panel installations and energy storage systems to help our grid power electrified vehicles. These actions will attract the jobs and service companies of the future and will help maintain Michigan's leadership position in transportation. More importantly, though, these actions will improve our quality of life by reducing vehicle noise, saving money, saving time, improving safety, and enabling equitable and lifelong mobility for residents. As many of you may know, there are already driverless shuttles operating at the Summer Olympics, at Yellowstone National Park, in select cities in Arizona and California, and on multiple college campuses, even here in Michigan. Also, nearly every car manufacturer is rolling out a plan to electrify new models and expand public charging networks. I think the master plan could do two, three things. Identify public parks and facilities where installing EV chargers will encourage recreation and more frequent enjoyment of the parks, such as Hilltop Golf Course, Waltview Park, and Plymouth Township Park. Prioritizing review of zoning ordinance to determine how to address these technologies. And third and final, pursue partnerships with the city of Plymouth and adjacent townships to install EV chargers for municipal fleet vehicles. Thank you.
Okay.
How much do they cost?
How much do what cost?
The EV chargers?
Level one would be just a standard plug and 120 volt socket, so that usually comes with the vehicle, so everyone has access to that. A level-two charger would be around $2,000, once you have the electrician and all the permitting and all of that. And a level-three charger, which is the fastest type for full charge in about 45 minutes to an hour, that would be more like $50,000, with some additional engineering permitting depending.
Interesting idea, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else on a non-agenda item? Okay, hearing done, we will move on to public hearings. We have the Northville Road rezoning requests. And with that, Ms. Howell, we'll turn to you for your report.
Thank you, commissioners. I'll introduce the report and the applicant. Applicants are in attendance this evening to answer any questions that you might have. The rezoning request impacts nine parcels that are collectively just over three acres. They are located on the west side of Northville Road, and they all currently contain single-family homes. The zoning is multifamily, however, and the applicant's request is to rezone the properties to single families so that they are conforming structures with the zoning ordinance. These homes are from the 1920s and 1930s, and while doing some additional background research, in the 1965 master plan for the township, Northville Road was considered the busiest thoroughfare. This was predating freeway activity in that immediate area. And I suspect that because it was such a high-volume thoroughfare, that multifamily at the time seemed appropriate, and it was anticipated to grow in that respect. Since Northville Road is not a major thoroughfare, the single-family homes are more appropriate in our opinion. As a rezoning, the planning commission must make a recommendation to the township board for approval or denial with findings. On page four of our report, we do list five findings for recommendation of approval to the Board of Trustees. So that would be that the rezoning to single-family is consistent with the stated goals and objectives of the 2015 master plan. It will result in the preservation of detached, single-family residential development that is consistent in scale and intensity with other properties in the immediate area. It will be less impactful on the environment than other uses currently permitted in a multifamily zoning district. It can be beneficial to the public good, as it will likely encourage maintenance to the existing structures and character, and it will not adversely add any additional traffic to Northville Road as compared to redevelopment of the sites as multifamily. Thank you.
Thank you. And the primary applicant is here, I believe. If you want to come up, if you have anything to add or state.
Good evening. My name is Charles Poslinski. I'm at 14353 Northville Road. I'm the newest resident of the nine parcels and had purchased the property because of how beautiful the setting is. There's river access and Heinz Park undeveloped property across the river area with the hope of growing the existing home into something more typical of the township. So approached the building department months ago and then found out that the little designation A attached to the R2 zoning was an obsolescent zoning, and it meant I couldn't do anything. And that started a conversation with myself and my neighbors, some of which are here, but all nine were equally surprised to realize that we are not currently zoned R1. Sharon is a neighbor. Her husband's been there since he was two years old, in that house, actually. And so we're coming forward requesting the change to the zoning to reflect the property's current use and our desire to have it maintained as R1 homes so that we have the same ability to maintain the properties, grow the properties, change the properties as all the other township residents who are living in the neighborhood. And so we appreciate Laura's hard work and recognize that asking for the rezone doesn't add any burden to the traffic volumes, to the existing sanitary and water systems. We're not asking any major change or any change at all, actually, except in how the properties are currently zoned.
Which one is yours again? Which?
14353.
353, here it is. Are there any questions at this point for the primary applicant?
Yes, if you have any to find?
No, no, I'm asking the commission. We're going to open up the public hearing in just a minute. Any comments or questions from the commission?
What is the negative of the current zoning?
It's, I can try to explain what I was told the technical aspects of. So the current zoning has a minimum lot size of 100 foot, so we're automatically non-conforming. And it isn't simply the R2, which is a higher-density volume, but the A designation. And so the reason that I started this process is that when I spoke to the chief building official for the township and was asking about general setback information, he pointed out the A. It's an obsolescence zoning add-on, so that I can't do anything to the property. My neighbors have historic cars. They may not add a two-car garage because of that A in the zoning designation. I can't add a first-floor master bedroom at 55 years old. I'd like to actually possibly change that. And so I was told that there were two possible approaches to resolve the issue. One is that I would remain a non-conforming structure, pay $2,700, present you folks with my individual house plan, and then have you evaluate that house plan for a lot that has a home on it in order to change the structure in any way, shape, or form, versus come up ahead of you, in front of you, for $2,900 and ask that we be rezoned back to R1, which would take that arduous cost, because that cost wouldn't be just borne by me, but each of us individually, the $2,700. And so I know you folks are charged with a big task. When development comes to town, traffic studies are done, site issues, the burden on sanitary and water and all that stuff. We would be forced individually to come to you each time someone wanted to change, you know, to add a garage or change the outside of the house, the footprint in any way, shape, or form. And so just after a conversation with my neighbors and through encouragement of the township planners, it certainly seemed like the most appropriate way forward was just to ask for the zoning to be put back to what the homes currently, you know, they're currently single-family homes, so that the zoning fit what those structures are and what they have always been. They have never been anything but single-family homes.
How long have you owned the home, and did you know of that existing zoning when you moved in?
No, so I've owned the home since February, and I did not know that. And as a matter of fact, I was a little more than surprised that when I started the conversation, I think your chief's building official's name's Mr. Lewis?
It was, he retired.
Oh, congratulations to him.
Yeah, I wish it were me.
Yeah. I started that conversation with him not thinking at all that there was a red flag or a problem. And so during that conversation, I'd been approached by several township employees. Mr. Volva is one of them.
One of them.
And they said, oh, well, we're not sure what the issue is, because that's just a regular multifamily zoning. And then we went to the tax books and found the little A designation, and the A changes the entire conversation. And so even under the R2, even if the R2 zoning were to remain in place without the A, they would all still remain non-conforming structures, because the lot size for a multifamily property, if you can imagine what that looks like, is a minimum 100-foot width. And the R1 zoning currently, and almost all communities have adopted this as an R1, or at least the urbanized communities, is a 60-foot width, but certainly traditionally 35- and 50-foot widths were normal in the '30s and '40s and '50s in most of Michigan, in the urbanized communities. And so the R1 zoning gets us as close to lot conformance as possible in that my lot, for instance, is 50-foot wide, most of the lots are, and the current township requirement for an R1 zoning is 60-foot.
Laura, when do you suppose this zoning was done? It would have been done after the houses were built.
It must have been. The master plan from 1965 showed this planned as multifamily at that time, so.
I think it had to be a mistake.
I think because Northville Road was the suspected thoroughfare, that they anticipated that would be an area for development.
Wow.
Could I offer a little more? I'm retired from Wayne County's engineering department.
Oh, congratulations.
Yeah, I feel like I do. A part of the history of the community, because I've been in the city and the township for a long time, and I have friends who've been here also a very, very long time. The current retirement home, for instance, was a hotel. And so in anticipation of M14 expansion and I-275 expansion, it was believed that a ramp would go in at 5 Mile and/or Northville Road, and that development seemed to fit that. And then, of course, that didn't happen, and folks may be happy about that not going in at 5 Mile, or maybe, but due to the proximity of the interchange, the first exit ramp available is 6 Mile. And so Northville clearly never got developed the way they had envisioned it based on what they expected the freeway expansions to do. And thank goodness, that didn't happen. It remains a nice little connection between downtown Plymouth and downtown Northville.
Makes sense to me.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, and so with that, we will open the public hearing at 7:17. So is there anyone here that wishes to be recognized? You're entitled to three minutes. Yes, come forward and give us your name and address if you wish.
My name's Mark Crower. I reside at 14341 Northville Road, Chucks neighborhood. Like he said, he approached us. I had no idea. I purchased the house a couple of years ago, that it was R2-A. I bought the home because of the property, just like him. It's beautiful, backs to the river, privacy, all those great things that we all like to enjoy, with maybe future plans of adding on, maybe trying to add a second story, a true second story to the home for my children. But when I heard that, that was kind of disappointing. My lender didn't catch it, title company worked, didn't catch it. I've still got the financing to buy it. It looks like a single-family house, smells like a single-family house, feels like one. Just kind of makes sense to me that it should be designated as one. I support Laura's report. Think it kind of makes sense and speaks for itself. Just wanted to be here to let you guys know that I support what Charles is doing.
Hey, well, thank you for coming in. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am, you can come up and.
We're all in support of changing it.
Okay, well, thanks again for coming. Anyone else? Yes, sir. If you come up.
Hi, my name's Harold Jacobs. I live at 14324 Northville Road, across the street from these beautiful people. I have been in that house since 1956. I bought the house from my family when my parents passed away. I never even knew that there was a change being done until I heard about the freeway being put in as a youngster. Everybody thought that was going to be a good ideal. I don't believe I did, ever. I always thought it was a single-family home. To find out this was, it just blew me away. I support them, and I think that it should be R1, that whole area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
So does the rezoning impact the house across the street as well? No, it's just these nine parcels, right?
No, can I clarify that the neighbor did approach me when the sign, when the public sign?
But is he R1?
No.
No. Well, we're the same thing as, we never know.
So what zoning is, what zoning are you?
They're multifamily.
Oh, they're multifamily?
Yep.
All right, yes, sir.
So I actually don't live in their median neighborhood. I live 4241 North Clemmons, which is just to the east off Northville. So I'm here to support the neighbor I don't know and his surrounding neighbors, because the intent was rebalancing that community 20 years ago with the idea it was a single-residential neighborhood, including Lakewood, which surrounds the entire area. So President's has been established since the '50s with single-residential homes in the area. We understand from the respectful planners' research, there was a planned development for the corridor. That didn't happen, thank God. Good thing for the whole community. And I'm just here to say I'd encourage a vote for reserving back to single-dwelling areas, R1, if that's what that definition is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing done, we will cancel the public hearing at 7:22. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
A question. Laura, have you heard anything negative or anyone who's in opposition of this rezoning?
We have not received any written correspondence about this project. That was negative.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, then I would invite a motion, and whoever makes that motion, to be sure to include the findings of fact that are contained in the planning letter if so desired. Well, we do have to have findings of fact, so if you don't agree with these findings of fact, you'll have to come up with your own. So is there a motion?
I'll make motion to approve application 23940521, and with the five issues, recommending that we recommend to the Board of Trustees to change the zoning to R1, and that we recognize the five issues stated on page four of the planning report.
Is there support?
I support it.
Move by Commissioner Postel in support of I Commissioner Itzel to recommend to the Board of Trustees rezoning of subject properties stating the findings of fact in the planning report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Okay, good luck to you all. Hope this corrects the issue that's been out there for decades. Okay.
But didn't we leave the other houses kind of dangling?
They weren't in this, in this request, no.
They just weren't part of the request?
No, the applicant proposes the rezoning change.
Right.
Do you know how many homes are across the street that would be affected, or that are affected?
I'm trying to figure that out from here.
Over, over nine, assuming the properties wanted to be R1.
So those property owners, if they so desired, could come forward as these property owners did as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on to new business, we have the M14 billboard signage applicant. And Ms. Howell, if you would present your report.
Thank you. This application is for two digital billboard signs to be located along M14, just east of Ridge Road. The subject site has been identified in the report. It is zoned, the TAR Technology and Research District, and it contains the stormwater system for that industrial park. As we note in our report, billboards are considered pole signs per the zoning ordinance, which are only permissible by the planning commission upon finding that one of two conditions exist, that a monument sign would block the vision of drivers, or that a wall or projecting sign may not legally be established on a side facing a street. In reviewing those two criteria, the ordinance charges the commission with permitting the minimum height necessary to achieve visibility, provided it does not exceed the height of the building to which it is accessory. The township attorney has provided a written opinion, which is included in your packet, and on page three of three of his report, he finds that neither of these two conditions for a pole sign appear to apply to the proposed digital billboards. And based on those two findings, it's recommended that the planning commission deny these two billboards. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And is the applicant here?
Good evening. My name is Randy Oram, and I'm the president of International Outdoor, the proposed applicant. And if I may, we do have, our package is quite extensive, as you guys have already seen, it's about 100 and something pages. We've got some additional supplemental information, and if I may, I'd like to pass it out.
Sure.
So that, and also if.
Thank you.
So instead of going over this whole presentation page by page, I'd like to give brief, and I'm joined today by counsel Adam Barron from the Badman Law Firm. And I'd like to just talk briefly and in general without taking too much time. I know there's a lot of people here, and then I should answer any questions that concern I know there's a lot of people here and then I should answer any questions that concern you may have. The first part of the presentation talks about who we are as a company. International Outdoor is a local minority-owned women's business enterprise located in Farmington Hills, Michigan. We're locally owned and operated, we're proud of that. We're WBE certified and we pride ourselves, as you can see from the first part of the whole presentation, about being a part of the community. Eighty-three percent of our clientele is local businesses. And when the digital billboards are not in use, we try to benefit the local charities, the local organizations, and the local community and the different functions that they may have. And as you can see from some of it, it's not necessarily just locally. It's sometimes out of the area in Midland and as well as, we did a package with our heart to it with Houston, where we came up with a creative idea and it ended up taking steam and we had over 6,000 billboards throughout the state supporting Houston when Houston was under a flood. So we're proud of that. We're proud of the opportunity. As a matter of fact, I got a call today from Mayor Rochester Hills and said that if you'd like, I'll be more than happy to send you a support letter. He didn't realize that we were coming up today. But we're, that's pretty much it about giving back and that's on our website as well. The second part of that part of the presentation talks about how digital billboards are being used. And I know people have a different conception about how they're being used and how they rotate. In Michigan, what we're doing is eight advertisers with eight seconds each. And that's on the digital side. On the static side, of course, it's just one advertiser. And that's on the back part of the presentation as well as some additional support letters that we've got in there. And from that point, it talks about the signs itself. And if you look at the Halyard and Ridge signs, and I think Adam will probably touch back on it, when we started presenting this package, and if you look at it, it does include two signs. The property originally, and if you look at the package and the supplemental package besides the display, digital monument sign, when that property was developed as the industrial park, there was no vegetation there other than grass. What you'll see from the arborist report is that's all wild growth and bird plantings and bird droppings that's grown over time. That was completely flat. There was water detention retention, as I think the planner had mentioned. And it's been taxed as a taxable used piece of property. And all of the findings that I think you'll find, you really can't use it as a taxable piece of property because you really can't find much use for the minimal, when you look at the maps and so forth. The verbiage in there and the T A R zoning, I think I'll reflect on our attorney to address. But if you go to page 11, if I may, and I think that's important to note, for our business and as a billboard company, if you go to page 11, you'll see at the bottom.
Are you talking page 11? That's...
Of this package here, the book.
The big, okay.
Yeah. So if you look at page 11 of that, and I think this is probably one of the most important things that I want to reflect on and try to move forward. When, in our business, it's best for the digital billboards to be on the outside of this particular project. So when you're driving, you're looking at a billboard, we call it a right-hand read where you're traveling, the billboard's to your right. And the other one is what we call a cross read, where you're reading it across traffic. And when we did the study on this particular property, it's best for us from a visibility standpoint to have the digital billboards on the outer portions of the two sites. In discussions with counsel, when we sent this package forward, he thought that, you know, that there may be an intrusion of light on behalf of the residents on the other side of Ridge Road. So what we did, on this page here, you'll see that the digitals are on the outer. But when you go to the signage map on the next page where, on the next section where it says west sign, you'll see what we did on the package on the tab where it says west. And it would be page 15. Is there any questions on 11?
So we're talking this one?
That's 15 or 11?
15.
Okay, on 11, if you look at the bottom where it says proposed, what we did in return, we took the digitals and brought them on the inside instead of the outside. So what you'll see later on in this package as well is a light study as to a digital, a digital billboard and the light that it protrudes out, how strong is that light? And what you're going to find is we have literally no light protruding onto any residential property. So we did that with advice of counsel, but we want to be a partner with your community, not necessarily what's in our best interest. And we're trying to find a happy medium. So we took the digitals, instead of being on one side, we moved them to the other side. And that's on page 15. The other thing is, you know, the ordinance allows for a 25-foot setback. As you look at the property, and that's pages 16 and 17, and it applies to both locations, if you look at the property itself, there would be no harm in us having a zero setback. The whole intended purpose for a billboard is to have visibility for the intended viewer. And it's best to have it as close to the road as possible. So that's pretty much the rest of the pages on there. The east sign is pretty similar. If you look at the property, what you're allowed is, in Michigan, you can't put a billboard within 1,000 feet of another billboard. We have so much frontage there, I think we've got about 1,350 feet, that we can put two billboards on that property. So we've got one on each end. And again, on the east sign, so one is on the eastern portion of the property, one is on the western portion of the property. And that's pretty much what the property itself, I think the package speaks for itself. So one of the things that we would ask is, as part of this whole process, is to allow us to have a zero setback as opposed to a 25-foot setback. The lighting, I think, is an important issue to reflect on. And what we've done is we've put a graph in there on the pages, which, if you look at page 30 where it says lighting and technology, page 30 is a graph done by our billboard company. And I think it's important to reflect as to the usage of the technology, but also what type of technology are we using? The billboards that we use are of the highest caliber of quality. And what they do, an LED light protrudes straight out. The billboards that we use, the LED light protrudes down in a downward level so that an LED light, instead of the old incandescent lights where they glow, an LED light is directional. And so it protrudes out. And with the Dectronics technology that we use, it's geared towards the driver so it's not necessarily shining straight out. It's geared up high. And if you're looking at your line of sight like you're looking at that wall, what you're going to see is that the light is protruded down so that it gives you better visibility and a crisper picture. But it's also the most advanced technology. The lighting graph that you'll see on page 30 is the level of lighting and what they call candles. And once you get further out, and this is at 250 feet, what you're going to see at, oh, this is 500 feet, I'm sorry. What you're going to see is that how the lighting gets reduced even less and less and less. And, and that's on the west sign. So we're proposing a digital and a static. The static's on the outers, the digital's on the inners. The static units, it's a directional light. So what you're seeing from your can lights where it faces straight down, our billboards have a pole that protrudes out and it shines on the light. It's specific for billboards so that you don't go and you have more of a reach. If you look at page 32, it shows you the lighting and where the lighting will hit. So it's not like you're lighting up the whole billboard, outside of the billboard. You're only trying to light the billboard itself for the messaging. And that's what page 32 shows you, that graph as to the lighting. The important part, I think, that some of the concerns may be with lighting to residents. To the west, on the other side of Ridge Road, I think we've eliminated that 100%. To the east, there isn't any, even on the industrial property, we've eliminated that 100%. So that the lighting itself cancels each other because the inner side of the two billboards is the side that's digital. But even with that, what we did is we looked at the residents across the freeway from the M14 on the other side, which would be on the south side of M14. And what you'll notice along that area is you've got some vegetation, that's year-round vegetation, and the pictures that we took from Google are in the winter. And so what you're seeing, the green vegetation, that's going to last all year. And, and that's on pages 34 and so forth. What you've got also is there's a, there's a ridge there along the freeway and the trees are planted on that ridge. And when you look at the residents and you look at your line of sight and you're looking at the distance from that to the billboard, it's literally impossible. And what we did is we took a stick out there and then we drove around trying to find a stick in the subdivision, and that's how we ended up with the pictures. We couldn't even see our measuring stick from any of the areas with our line of sight from the residence to the south of the billboards proposed. I think it's important to note, and you'll look at the technology, I talked about the Dectronics technology, which is in here again, and today's environment, you know, it's a digital world. When you look at the reasons, one of the things that we're talking about with this particular, with the digitals is, we want to be a part of your community. If there is an emergency call, we can put a billboard up, literally in about 15 minutes, our digital technology recycles itself and posts whatever messages that we want. One of the things that we're proud of is, I'm a Wayne County Sheriff Reserve and there was a sheriff that got run over in Heinz Park while he was jogging in the morning. And I got a call from, you know, at the time, Benny Napoleon and said, Randy, that, you know, one of our sheriffs just got run over. Can we get a billboard up? We got the car, it's an enclave. Can we get the billboard up? How fast can we get it up? And I said, give me a few minutes. Within about 30 minutes, we created the billboard. We put up a $5,000 reward from our company we donated. We put the billboard up at about, I think that ran over that morning, we put it up by 11:00. And they got tips, by 10:00 o'clock the next morning, they ended up catching the guy. So these are just some of the things. During Corona, one of the things that we're proud of, and you'll see it on 48 and so forth, we really didn't have many drivers on the road. As you all know, it was a different environment and a different world. So what we did between March 6th and June 12th, no, June 12th and March 12th and June 6th, what we did is we donated space. We donated space to the people that were on the road and not locked up at home to thank the nurses and caregivers, to report price gouging. So we used it as an avenue and a tool with today's technology. So we had this place to try to figure out, how do you get information? It's all new to us. And that's what we did. So I think it's important, and you'll see the technology continues to change. We've got camera-facing traffic now. We can do so much that with identifying the different vehicles, identifying accidents, we have cameras two ways, one on the roadway and one on the digital itself. There's a whole section in here on the Technology and Research Park as well as, you know, the signage itself. There's a lot of signs, which I think Court Counsel will address. Outside of that, that we believe there's multiple signage in Plymouth Township. And I just want to just reflect before I hand it over to Court Counsel. The supplement is digital display monument signs. Some of the advantages, some ideas towards different signage, the report with respect to the arborist finding, with respect to, he just, one of the statements, he says, "All these trees were presumably not planted and were spread by the birds to this location from the surrounding landscape." And then one of the concerns has always been, you know, driver distraction and, you know, are digital billboards safe? I've given you a CD, there's probably 15 different studies that talk about, you know, safe driving. And the challenge more is, you know, these telephones than it is somebody looking at roadway. But I did just want to reflect on one other thing that I think your planner mentioned, you know, is there a public good? Absolutely. And I think we've shown that. Will it increase traffic? No, it doesn't increase traffic. So, and the other thing is, I think what you're going to find is that as owners of the property, you'll find that it'll be better maintained. Because right now, if you drive by there, I don't think they maintain it as well as they could or should. But with our properties, we end up signing a maintenance contract and they go through and pick up the debris every so often. They cut the grass every 10 days or 12 days or when necessary. They go through and pick up the tree. They keep it very well groomed and maintained. But with that, I would like to turn over to our attorney to address some parts and then I guess from there we can answer any questions that she may have.
Thank you. Adam Barron on behalf of International Outdoor, just a couple of comments I'd like to raise. I'm not sure I agree with the definition that this is a pole sign. In fact, in our materials, we've shown that we can, we can make the sign to look just like a monument sign with a brick facade and to put it in place. Your definition of a monument sign, what here and pole sign are all tied to accessory uses of the property. You see from the map up here, there is no accessory use of this property. The property is unusable but taxed. And in fact, if you look at the one sign would be approximately here and the sign would be approximately there, that would be limited use of this property, allowing the landowner to bring an economic value, justify the tax burden. One of, one of your corporate citizens here has to pay taxes on this property every year to maintain at, at the expense of the municipality for, to have this, these water retention basins here. So our goal here is to make this a viable piece of property that is intended to be viewed by passerby on M14. And as Mr. Oram said, billboards are a local animal. Eighty-four percent of billboards are used by local businesses. So that's very important. Your attorney makes two comments. He says, number one, provisions 18.4 states no pole signs are allowed in this area. Well, actually, what it says is the maximum of one round, one ground sign here. We're not allowed any signs on this property at this point because to put a sign on a piece of property that's facing M14 can't be seen. The intent to talk about monument signs is when it's visible from the road. It would not be visible from the road on M14. We would need the height. And as you can see from the pictures we've attached, the other accessory uses around the area, the overpass, the cell towers, height doesn't need to be seen in that area. Secondly, he says that it's a maximum of one ground sign. And so ultimately, I don't think this is inconsistent with the use. I remind the panel that on section 25.13, there's a hardship standard. And clearly here, when we look at other uses of signage in the township, and we've shown a lot of inconsistent usage, a lot of lack of enforcement at the township of the sign ordinance, that we're not even allowed to erect one sign while we're finding multiple signs and other problems in the municipality. So we would ask that the Planning Commission approve this use or assist us in modifying this use to a manner which would be acceptable to the township, that we can bring an economic viability to this parcel of property, which otherwise has no use. Thank you.
Brad, do you have any questions? We'll be...
How tall is the sign again?
We're recommending 70 feet. The industry standard for the state of Michigan is 70 feet. And what you'll find is with the study of the existing signs in Plymouth, they're at 60 to 70 feet.
And that's to the top of the sign?
That's the top of the sign.
Fifty-four feet to the base.
Correct. So you would build a monument, you would build a, this is brick?
It's a, it's not real brick. It's the facade brick. Yeah, if that's what's required, we could and we would. It wouldn't be a problem. Giving you some examples of different ones. I think that personally speaking, I think that a pole would look better on that property than...
But a good example of that brick is the sign over by the Weingards.
Baldwin.
On 275, next to the sign.
Yeah, that one there, but you can see it in your example. There's one in Orion Township on Baldwin and I-75 that was built a few years ago. But that's, gives an idea of the pole itself.
Who owns the property?
We have a purchase agreement. It's currently owned by Domadia and we've had it under option for quite some time. And they're the people that originally developed and the...
And there's a support letter from Domadia.
There is a support letter. They're the people that originally developed that whole industrial park 26 years ago. And that's where we found out that when they originally built that development park, there was no vegetation there, there was no trees there. That was just meant as a water retention, detention pond.
Other questions or comments from the commission?
You glossed over very quickly the distraction element because, I mean, the whole purpose of that is to attract the eyes of... because, I mean, the whole purpose of that is to attract the eyes of drivers coming along here. That's generally a fairly dangerous stretch of road that there are a lot of accidents on M14.
You know, we generally, we've included pretty, studies nationwide, studies that billboards do not cause distraction. Gibson Webster is one of the most famous done on that topic, which it simply doesn't hold water, that there is other, there are other things that are equally out of the road, right? And more importantly, in the car, that are more distracting to the billboard.
And if I may, the Gibson Webster study, that was done on I-75, for that stretch in Madison Heights. And what they did is, they did a study of the billboards that were there that got converted to digital. So they went back, I don't know how many years, and that's provided for you. And they looked at the accident ratio and the reasons for the accidents. And not a single accident in that report on that stretch, I think they had like eight or nine billboards in that stretch that converted from static to digital. Not a single billboard was responsible for a single accident. And these are billboards that were static that converted to digital. And the reason why the reports are pretty lengthy, and that's why I just glossed over it and I gave you a CD. There's, each report is a matter of, some of them are 100 pages. But what you're going to find, the most local study from Gibson was local. And they took the billboards, not necessarily on a straightaway like on M14, they took it right in front of the exit at 14 Mile, where our competitor has a billboard as you're getting off the exit on 14 as you're heading south. They did that study. That was a static billboard, they converted it to digital. Not a single, not a single accident was due to somebody looking at the billboard. And it's consistent with the other studies nationwide throughout the United States. The billboards are serving a purpose. The goal, I think you're going to find, commissioners, that people are more on their phones and it seemed like that was the increase in traffic accidents more than anything else from what I read from the report. But we have never heard of an accident where the person was too busy looking at the sign. The other thing I do want to stress is that they do not allow moving. So on Michigan law, it's instant changing of a billboard from one ad to the other, and there's no moving, you know, there's no moving messages that say hi or anything else like that.
In fact, you could find more, more activity on on-premise signs, right? Gas stations that flash lights or fast food restaurants and what have you than you would on a billboard.
Yep.
And this is including at the front of the report itself. The state of Michigan is a very large advertising. It believes in billboards, it uses billboards.
And we did get, if I may, we did get approved by MDOT for both locations, both digital and static. And I don't think that MDOT would be regularly approving billboards if it was a threat to anybody's safety, nor would we want to be in that position. And switching the lighting, that was taken into consideration of the residents and trying to be a local partner, and a partner with your community and the residents. Even though for us, it's better to be on the younger end. But I think it's a matter of, could you be a better community partner? And that's where our goal was, in trying to switch the billboard to the inside.
So back to these spider web graphs that are on page 30 and 39.
Yes, sir.
So Daktronics, who did this analysis? And what does this tell us exactly?
Daktronics did do the analysis. And what that tells you is a candle, a candle wattage.
Foot candle?
Yeah, foot candle, correct. And how strong of one candle that light goes and extends out. As I mentioned to you, an LED light, directional. And with the directional and the fact that it's angling down, you don't get the lighting that you would with a normal LED light, the ones that you see at a gas station. Most of those protrude straight out. So when you're looking at them, you're kind of looking through the lights coming out, you're seeing them differently. But, and what that does is, one foot candle, and I've got a, I didn't bring it today, but I've got a sample.
So to make sure I understand it, the graph on page 30 is telling us, like at the 60-degree angle, that this house, the light penetration to this house is one foot candle. Is that what it's trying to tell us?
I believe there's a decimal point there.
It's a decimal point?
Yes, it's .01.
Yeah, it is .01.
And these signs are the brightest during the daylight. They're weakest in the evening.
Because you're competing with the daylight, so they burn a little bit brighter.
Ratchet them down in the evening.
Yeah, you ratchet them down. And there are standards with respect to where we're at as far as the brightness. So we don't, we have a certain standard that the state allows. And we do it pretty much on all of our 34 locations, where they don't go too bright. More sunlight, the brighter they burn, but you can't really tell because it's competing with the sun. But at night, they conserve energy and they're a fraction of that.
And I always stress too, that in result of a failure, which I've never seen happen, they're designed to go black.
So for the use of this property, then, I think if I'm understanding what you were saying is that if these billboards are constructed, then the taxable value of that property would be greater, obviously, because of the value.
Right, and then the revenue generator, the property sustaining itself as opposed to going, the risk of tax forfeiture.
As well as personal property tax that we would...
Because eventually, the landowner may not want to pay the taxes anymore. They've got to pay the taxes.
There is no, yeah, personal property tax on that, but...
Yeah, so it is a revenue generator on both sides.
Laura, there's a couple of retention ponds on that site. What water are they collecting?
That would be the stormwater for the larger industrial park.
It also feeds from Ridge Road. There's like a culvert underneath Ridge Road that goes in. And that feeds into the Ridge Road, between Ridge Road and that street, the industrial street.
I don't know what the public sentiment would be.
I don't know.
I welcome you to call Mayor Barnett in Rochester Hills. You know, they're a similar community. They haven't had one complaint. We've been there about a year and a half. And we've been a great partner with the community. I just talked to him earlier today. He offered that, I shared with him that I was coming here today, and he offered that if you wanted a recommendation, he'd be more than happy to give one. But since we built the billboards in an industrial area on M59 at Crook, both east and west of Crook, and those are four billboards, there are two digitals on each side. In a year and a half, we've never had a complaint. As a matter of fact, we've had nothing but compliments. During COVID, when the high schools didn't have graduation, we put each kid up at one school on one side of the billboard, and the other school on the other side of the billboard. And that's how we celebrated their graduation last year.
What was the purpose for including the political signs in there, out of curiosity?
We put them all in here. You know, that when you look at the signage itself, our signage is tasteful, but...
You have my sign in there, I was curious about that.
No, what there was is, to my earlier...
Oh, I didn't, I didn't know your sign was in there. But you're talking about in the back section sign?
Yeah, in the back section.
Yeah, no, I think that's to show the different signage that you see. And I think the other thing I want you to take into consideration, if you do have that option of advertising on a digital billboard, that's not that expensive and it's pretty easy. So with digitals, there's no production cost. We do the creative, we hit the button, hit send, 15 minutes it loads. I think what you're going to find is that there may be a reduction in, you know, the signs that you see all over the place. 83% of our business is local businesses. So there was no doubt. I told my guys, they're real estate directors here, who else, with my son, and they went out. And I think what you're going to see is, people are going to look at that as an option. Your business community, I've talked to many people, and I didn't ask them to come out today. They're ready to use it. Al Jonah from Jonas is ready to use it. He endorsed it and said, you know, if you need anything, I'll be more than happy to come there. And what you're going to find is, you know, even now with your restaurants opening up, it's an option to let people know you've got 70, 80,000 cars on M14. Why not showcase, you know, your beautiful community and the businesses that you have in this community that are down the street? And we have that opportunity to showcase that eight seconds at a time.
What does that cost a restaurant to do that, just generally?
It depends on, you know, availability. Right now, it's election time, so it's hot, it's running around $2,000 per ad slot. But first quarter, it may run anywhere from 1,200 to 2,000, depending on when you go. And then if it gets really hot, you know, it's supply and demand. But it gives you more flexibility because you're catering to eight people versus just one person. And what you're going to find is, we always tend to have availability. So we do, you know, we'll do NNF or Something for Cancer, Kidney Foundation, or Kidney Ball. We'll always, you know, my goal is, my son is here today, is to have him run the company. I want to be like a goodwill ambassador and, you know, go out to the different charities and functions and, you know, spread the love a little bit and be a part of the different communities that we are involved in.
Yeah, and for international signs, I've never seen them not run buckle through the municipality signs or, you know, put a town to a great place to be kind of thing.
Yeah, no, Plymouth, Romulus, we just built some billboards in Romulus. If you look up there, and you're welcome to call them. We've never had any issues there. We passed there 7-0.
We already have two digital billboards in Plymouth Township, as I'm sure you know.
Oh, you have more than two, but it's okay.
On the highway.
And in 14.
Yeah, on M14, you've got, yeah, you've got the two over there, West of Sheldon there on 14. But throughout Plymouth Township, you've got, we've got an inventory of all of your signs that are in here. And we've got height and size and so forth.
Is that in the...
Yeah.
It's inconsistent with the...
Yeah, it was pretty detailed. It's pages 60, in the last part, section of page 66, we've got 70 years of signs in the Plymouth Township. And it goes from 66 to probably 73. So it's one of those that's identified.
Two digital, that's what I thought.
There's a few, there's more than two in the council, but two on M14, you're correct.
Right.
Laura, did you have any conversation with Kevin Bennett about this letter at all?
Just what was outlined in the letter.
Because he spells out in his opinion here, if the commission were to approve this, what would be the standards that we would need to consider? So I'm not sure if the commission has looked at all that or understand it all. So I encourage you to kind of look at it and see what you think and see if the discussion that we've had thus far addresses these, I'll call them findings of fact in a way, that he outlines.
So what happens if, with respect to the, you know, the penetration of the light into the residential areas, what happens if that's wrong? If that study's wrong?
If you go back, if you go back to the slide showing...
I don't have...
The map, the map.
The map?
If you go back to the map, we've inverted it now, so it can't be wrong. Because in 10, if you have up the Ridge Road sign, if you will, the digital's going to flash this way, it's not going to flash towards the residence. Same thing on the one near closer to the Perceptoron building. It's not going to be, it's not going to be tied to the residences, it's going to be put in the other way.
But it, I'm really talking about the residents that are south here on M14.
On the other side of the freeway.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing that you're going to see is the study that we have. I think the first thing I would say is, maybe visit the property. We'll be more than happy to put another pole out there. And you can drive around, as I did with taking these photos with our real estate director, but...
So what, did you put a boom out there or something?
Yeah, we put a stick boom. And we put balloons on it, and then we drove around during the day and trying to look for it. We couldn't find it. And we did one at the front part of the billboard, and then we did one at the back part of the billboard. Of course, the front part was more, and that's how we judge the photos that you see as far as the examples. So we took that and we put the stick up there, and then we put balloons in there, and that's how we find the thickness and the height and so forth. But the back part, you really couldn't see anything. The front part, you saw a little bit.
And Bob, how would you know if it was wrong? I mean, who would?
The residents, saying this thing's shining, I can't sit on my deck because this thing's shining in my eyes.
Yeah, but then perhaps it meant that the, what they are telling us today with the foot candles and all that.
Right, I'm saying, what if that study's wrong?
Yeah, but, I mean, I agree with what you're saying, I just don't know. How would we determine if it's wrong? I mean, a resident can say, well, it's shining...
You wouldn't until after they built it. And then it's, then what?
Too late. Or you have to make some adjustment.
To the extent that you're looking at the expert opinion, I mean, these are decimal points he's talking about. So I would offer to you that there's probably more intense headlights causing destruction to someone's porch than it is going to be from these signs.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I think that's what the reports will show, that even a porch light is more light than, and I can give you a report on foot candles for all of you. I just, you know, there's more information and I was trying to inform you of it. But I can give you the power of a foot candle, and it's my mistake for not including it. But we do have a report that I can provide as to what a foot candle is and how it is. And as I mentioned with you, you know, these are angled LEDs, which are in the package as well, as far as, if you look at the technology and research.
A foot candle is the amount of light emitted by a candle from one, visible one foot away, isn't it?
Right. And the state of Michigan did us no favors when it didn't use lumens to make it understandable.
Yeah, lumens, how does that translate into lumens?
It's a complicated term. But foot candles is exactly what you said, one candle, one foot away. So these would be specs.
And this is Daktronic, it's a publicly traded company that does this report, and they do it not necessarily for us, but they do it for everybody throughout. And I think...
So .01 would be the amount of light that you would be, emitted by a candle that would be visible 100 feet away?
One of the things I do want to point out, look at those photos. I want you to consider line of sight. So our billboard lights are angled downward towards the driver. And when you look at the residence and you look at that berm, their light, their line of sight, if you go on the berm, is still looking up. So I think there is a little bit of a clash there. And driving that area, and literally even walking on the south side of Ridge Road behind that, not intruding on the people's yards, you couldn't really see it. I mean, I'm pretty good size, but you couldn't even look up because that berm there is probably 10 feet. And then the vegetation, the photos that you see from the residence, that's winter photos. You can see that there's no leaves on those trees. And we do have photos in there as well of more recent. And you're going to see that, without going through the whole package, but you're going to see that it's pretty well vegetated on the south side. If you look at page 19, once that growth comes in, it's pretty acceptable.
So it would be visible to drivers that are eastbound, not westbound?
Oh, the crossroads, that would be a static.
Oh, that's a static?
Yeah, the one at Ridge Road, that would be a static because the other side of that, so that's the one where it would be directional lighting facing, protruding at the billboard with the study that I showed you. And we changed that around from the original presentation so that it wouldn't be a distraction or a possible intrusion to the neighbors to the west.
By static, does that mean print?
Correct.
Stretch vinyl, yes.
The stretch vinyl, and we use LED lighting, and it's only two lights. LED lighting, and they're protruded right at the billboard. And it doesn't bleed outside of the sign. As you'll see the study, we tried to cover about 75% of the sign. But it doesn't, the lighting may look like it, but it doesn't bleed outside of the face of the sign.
And I have a question. So I'm looking at our attorney's opinion here. And one of the points that he's making is that in permitting a pole sign, the planning commission shall permit the minimum height necessary to achieve visibility, providing it does not exceed the height of the building to which it is accessory. So there is no building...
That was my point, right?
Right. But have you tried or have you studied any other heights? How did you arrive at this particular height for this sign?
So what we did, trustee, the chairman, what we did is, we went out there with a boomstick, and it goes to 70 feet, and then we put balloons on it... and it goes to seventy feet, and then we put balloons on it at fifteen feet along the way.
Seventy feet and downward?
Correct, seventy feet to the top, and then we put balloons on it every fifteen feet. And that's how we measure the height, and that's how you'll see the photo under signage. That's how we determine that, that particular location and how that billboard, that's, and then what we do is every fifteen feet, we take it down and.
You remember too, the billboards aren't going to be functional if it can't be seen. To the extent that there's an overpass blocking it on the reed, there'll be no infrastructure, which is a waste of everyone's time, so.
Well, so one thing is, you want to be competitive in our business, right? You want, Adam mentioned, you want to be competitive. The billboards are at sixty and seventy feet. Could we reach a height of ten feet and go sixty feet? Yes, we could. I can't sit here and tell you that we couldn't. Its best potential is at seventy feet. Your line of sight is better, you're on the ground, it's just, it works better for us. But could we go to sixty feet, and will that bring the height down lower so that the residents across the freeway, as the trustee mentioned, would intrude even less if there even was any intrusion? We could do that, if that's what was the pleasure of this board as a condition, I believe that we can accommodate, because there's really nothing in front of it, so, but at the same time, we've got the overpass with Ridge Road, and if you look at the photo, we've got maybe about seven to ten feet of play. And so, you know, is it a matter of having it and saying, you know, you've got to go to sixty feet, or, but on the flip side, we'd like to be as successful as possible. For us, seventy feet would be the best circumstance. And that is because of your line of sight from the road, we're trying to stay in competition with our competitors, they're all at sixty and seventy feet. And so we're trying to stay within that boundary. But could we do it at sixty feet, and so the trustees comment with respect to the residents across, it would be less of an intrusion, if there is any intrusion. I don't believe there's going to be anything. This has been a project that we've got about three hundred hours in or more. I've been through there during the day, we couldn't see anything, and even though at night it may glow a little bit better, but you won't see it. The neighbors, you can, and I'd welcome anybody to go back there, and we can put a stick up, you won't see anything.
You made any attempt to contact the neighbors and communicate?
No, sir, we have not, not, no, I think once Adam mentioned to us the, so if I may, trustee, on page nineteen, that billboard that you see on page nineteen, that's at seventy feet, chairman.
Yeah.
So if you look at the billboard itself, it's fifteen feet tall, so we've got about maybe eight feet, but if a truck or something goes across Ridge Road there, then you would block out that billboard. So that's the purpose for the seventy feet there. We've got about, I don't know, six or seven or eight feet, in my opinion, based on our measurements. But if you've got a, you know, fifty-three footer crossing there, now you're blocking out the sign, where we're trying to get above that so that you can see it consistently. And that, there is the side that's facing the, to the west, Ridge Road. And if you look, the utility pole's at a hundred and ten feet, there's another emergency alert pole on the other side of the road at a hundred feet, a hundred, hundred plus.
Well, if you brought it to sixty, you would still see that sign, it would still clear the overpass.
It would. I think it would be right on the edge of that, personally speaking. But if that was a condition, then we'd, something that we would have to live with, and I think we would agree to, because our goal is to be a community partner here. It's not necessarily to intrude on anybody and, you know, to try to have a win-win. But, and on the other side, I don't think that it would bother it at all, to the east, this is the west sign, but to the east, it wouldn't bother it at all. The other thing I may want to point out, is if you look at the grade, there's so much information in here, and my apologies for the people in the audience that have other things, but, you know, when you're looking at M fourteen, and you're traveling eastbound, you know your grade is going downward. So when you're looking at that, you know, the grade and, you know, the eyesight and everything else, you're going downward, so you, you really need that height as well, but it's just another tweak on the process.
Well, other questions or concerns?
I do, I guess, as far, I mean, it's been a great presentation, lots of information, but if we have a planner's report recommending denial, and then the attorney's report recommending denial, what do we do?
So Laura, why, other than the attorney letter, do you want to summarize why you recommend denial?
For the reasons that attorney Bennett specified in this letter.
I guess, given that, how could we approve it? What grounds?
And there is an appeal process. So if we did deny, there is, you know, have you seen a copy of the attorney's report?
You haven't.
It's in the back.
You have?
I have it, but I do think you can, I think this board can approve it, based upon both the hardship standard and the fact that we can make this into a monument sign.
Can you have a seventy-foot mat monument sign? That's a lot of monument.
Straight down, sir.
I call that a skyscraper.
Not anymore.
Mine in two ways, we can go from the bottom of the sign straight down, my request would be to, you know, if you wanted us to break the column itself, it's less intrusive than, you know, having fifty feet of wall coming down from the top of the billboard.
Well, it becomes a matter of definition of a pole. You know, you may have one definition, the attorney, our attorney has a different definition.
You're correct.
You know, so that, it all, and I'm not sure if we're in a position to determine, you know, who's right, there are other appeal processes that you could go through. Certainly to go through the ZBA would be the next step if it were denied.
Well, we hope and pray that you guys will approve us, and, you know, we can be a community partner, and if one of the conditions is that you would like it based on the sixty-foot height, we would have no problem with that. You know, if you, another, you know, condition to the recommendation is to put the column and brick it on the outside, we have no problem with that. We, you know, we're here to work with you.
I don't know if it makes a material difference. I mean, I, I just, I, you know, I go back to having these billboards, you know, themselves is not particularly offensive, so long as it's not intrusive on the neighbors. You know, I don't, I mean, I don't find them offensive or anything like that, but it's just a question of whether, you know, it truly would not, people would, people that live near there would tune them out over time, because it's not lighting up, it's not lighting up my deck every night.
Well, see, I can tell you that it's not going to bother those neighbors. I welcome anybody on this board or in the audience to go there and take a look, you won't see a tree, you won't see anything, because of the berm and your line of sight, you know, your boundary, ten-foot berm, and then just look at the vegetation, that's wintertime photos, that vegetation will block out any infiltration of any lighting, in my opinion.
I have a question for Laura. So Laura, if there were a way that we could approve this tonight, what other areas in the locate, in the township, could other applicants come forth with similar signs? Like what could, any idea what M fourteen or two seventy-five could look like? How many more applications for these types of signs we could get?
There is a, you know, a significant frontage on M fourteen and two seventy-five in the township, but I'd have to look into that further to give an estimate.
That's something to keep in mind, too. If there were a way that we could approve this, then next month, if we get another application for another billboard, and then another billboard, like how do we say, like on what grounds can we discover that or keep a, keep a handle on that?
The digital ones that are, that was an issue that came before the Board of Trustees several years ago. I don't know if it hit the planning commission, if it did, it was before I was on it. It became, and because it was grandfathered, because it had been there for so long, there was some pushback from some of the former members of the Board of Trustees, but I don't know that there's been any complaints of noise or of light pollution since.
Billboards are also recommended by state spacing and this kind of hub interim. That's what we call a capillary system, and so there'll never be more billboards than there are today.
And if I may, you know, with respect to the trustee's comment, you have to look at each property and the unique characteristics. How many areas in Plymouth are you going to see that it's a water detention retention in an industrial park? And as the planner mentioned, there is a lot of frontage in Plymouth, in this great city, but I think you've got to look at one is, you know, will the property owner, does the property owner want it? I can tell you that we've searched high and low, and you can't really find, we got lucky to find this particular property. But what I ask is for you to look at the unique characteristics of the property. And I think that's what determines your decision today. Does it meet unique characteristics that warrant moving the project forward? Because you won't find many characteristics of this nature in your township, at least we haven't found them except for this, so, and we've been.
And you're going to render this property self-sufficient as opposed to.
Not a lot, a lot of other things you could do with the property in other words?
Not with other wetlands, if you don't.
But we do a boring, and I don't mean to delay again, we do a boring process, it's not a footing, so there is enough room to go through, and what we do is we do a boring foundation where they drill a hole six feet round, twenty-five feet deep, and the weight and the engineering of our particular billboard goes in that area, and there is a little bit of area that perks so that you could build on. And that is the area between M fourteen to where, about five to ten feet away from where that wetland extends. So that area does perk, we can build it there, we can use our engineering there, and because we only take up twenty-five square feet of ground space, the height that you see above it is all air space. So when you look at, you know, are we going to interfere with, you know, what's already there? The question is no, the ground space at least.
Do you attach cell towers to post signs?
We've never done one, there are some, there's one on Warren and Southfield in Detroit there, we've never done one. I've got about a hundred sites throughout the area, we've never done one, but I think with the G five technology, you're going to see more of it, because, you know, with G four, the height was a lot more, G five, there's more antennas, but it's less. But I don't see, you know, I've seen a few of them where they're on the front part of the V, they've got them inside of there, but we've never done one. And, you know, with most of those, a lot of them require a switching station, like a ten by ten or a ten by twenty, but we've never done one.
What do you guys want to do?
Approve, of course.
We do have, we have two recommendations, recommend, you know, recommending to us that we deny it. And there is, there is an appeal process, so you're not completely shut out.
Yeah, no, we understand that.
Right, but there's no better, there's no better body than the planning commission to make these kinds of calls versus the ZBA.
Unfortunately, our ZBA member isn't here today, so I'm sure he would have something to say about how he would feel about it, and that would give you a little bit of an idea of what might happen there.
Chairman Sobolski?
Yes.
If the applicant is proposing something different this evening at the sixty-foot in a monument with brick, then I would recommend that they submit some additional information, and that the attorney would review it, and that this matter would be tabled until then.
Okay.
We don't have any additional information out of what I submitted. I've shown the information with respect to sixty-foot in the monument, it's just a numbers change, which we'd be willing to accept, so, but.
But isn't that different than what the attorney had reviewed, is?
We can make that a condition.
As far as a monument sign and sixty-foot?
Well, I don't think that it's clear from the application that it's going to be a monument sign with the brick and not sixty.
Make that a condition of the approval process, if you wish.
And I'm not sure if that would meet the concerns that the, our attorney had raised.
I don't either, but it would give him a chance to review what is finally being proposed to the commission.
I think you're better off by just, you know, resubmitting some, something with the sixty-foot and having another review done and see where we go.
What about the second sign, the other sign that's at seventy feet?
Well, how do you think about seventy, or sixty at that sign?
If it was a condition of it, it wouldn't bother me. I think that we can live with that, you know, to try to appease it. The goal is, I've done it before where it's been a condition of the approval, where if this body, this honorable body found that, you know, that you were in favor of it, but, you know, we had to meet certain conditions, and I have done it before where, you know, it was a certain condition, that Mr. Arm, you have to bring it down to sixty feet, that's a certain condition. If you, you know, we want the column brick, you know, facade on there, that's a condition. I have done that before, and if this honorable body found that, that's what, because it's a long process, and our goal is to start this process, we still have a lot of work to do to try to get to that point, and we'd love to do it, you know, the sooner the better. And we'd like to try to, you know, start working on the property as well. Our goal is to, you know, close on the property, clean the property, you know, and try to make it more appearance, and, you know, your department here will be well aware of the improvements from, you know, us being on hands and on board.
So if we, if we denied it, and it went to the ZBA, and they denied it, then they're done at that point, right?
No. Up to the circuit court.
Circuit court?
Right, and then since your, since your ordinance contains First Amendment issues as well, if you possibly read other, other avenues.
About that, but.
My goal is to work with you as part of this community. Unfortunately, you know, there's a legal process that is out there as well, but our goal is to work with your community. As you've seen from the presentation, we want to be a part of this community, we want to work with your community, and.
Yeah, you've done a great job with the presentation, I mean, it's very thorough.
But the application does say pole sign, and the attorney reviewed it based on a pole sign, and now we're talking about a monument sign, which is a different definition in our ordinance. So I would think we would need a different opinion. Do you agree, Laura?
So do you think maybe they should go back and?
Like if we tabled it and a new application as a monument sign, and had that reviewed by the attorney, do you think, what are your thoughts, Laura?
Yeah, I would recommend that, and that the attorney be here at the next available meeting.
That would be helpful, if he would be here. And the sixty-foot, and then I'd also be interested in knowing what conditions we legally could put, you know, if it were approved. For example, as Commissioner Itso has, had raised, you know, you know, putting the cell receptor or the antenna up, you know, prohibiting any flashing and lights and all of that. I'd be curious as to know, I mean, how much authority can we exert on that whole design aspect of it and use?
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
With respect to what the planner just said, we wouldn't be opposed if, you know, the technicality is, but all I would ask is to allow us the opportunity to supplement, not necessarily resubmit, because the last thing I want to do is submit another fifty pages, but I think as the commissioner, Commissioner just mentioned, what I would ask is for this honorable body to allow us to supplement this package, and it's really nothing more than the pages that you just seen, but allowing the attorney to give you a different opinion and perspective, and then coming back as soon as possible, based on, you know, the two changes that I think the commissioner mentioned, and, you know, we can reduce it to sixty feet on both of them, we can, you already have it, and it's just a matter of changing the height from seventy to sixty, but to supplement it.
Not simple on your viewpoint, but for us, it's a definition in our ordinance, and so.
You're making a great point.
We can't just, you know, say, oh, okay, we'll go with calling it a monument, then the next time someone comes in and they want to pull. Then the next time someone comes in and they want a pole sign and they want to call it a monument sign and...
On the fly. You make a great point, yeah.
Yeah, what I'm saying is allow us the opportunity to supplement it and come back as opposed to a new application.
Right, we would, if we tabled it, you would be able to do that.
I'm fine, yeah, no, I'm fine with that. I think it gives you guys an opportunity to get back to your attorneys and maybe look at it a little bit further. I did give you guys each my personal card. If you have any questions, feel free to email me, call me. I'm not far away. If you have anything whatsoever that you want to see, let me put the stick up, I'll go put the stick up again, whatever it is that we're here to accommodate and to allow you to make an informed decision, but I would just like to get supplemented and not a new application. So I think we wouldn't have any problems with that either.
Question for Laura. What is the definition of a pole in the...
There is a provision in the ordinance, the sign ordinance, that discusses what constitutes a monument sign versus a pole sign as two different types of ground signs, and that the base of the monument has to be X percentage.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's a great point. It's hard to, it's really hard to conceptualize this as a monument sign. Speak of a monument sign in front of a, you know, commercial building.
What you're saying is it's a pole sign masked by a monument-looking type material.
Right. And we can do that two ways. One is we can take the pole and wrap the pole so that, you know, from a distance, it looks like it's brick, but it's really a fake brick that we engineer on there. The other way, as I've shown it with you in a photo, we can literally take the whole width of the billboard and go straight down with it. And what they do there is they put I-beams behind it, and they just put a facade on there, but I think that, even though I think it meets your definition of a monument where it's, you know, from the ground up, I think that it's more harmful, and I think it's safer the way that, you know, just to have a center pole. You know, you've got 25 square feet versus, you know, 50 square feet, 50, 50 feet wide and all the way down.
I think we need to see how is a monument sign defined? And by just breaking up something along, you know, that masks a pole, does that automatically make it a monument sign?
Or do we have to address if we have billboards on the freeway or anywhere in our township? I mean, that's sort of the issue.
There's a lot of law regarding that, but, you know, we're not educated enough about that. I think it would be helpful to have the attorney present when they do come back. Are we ready for a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
My motion, as it relates to application 2396-0521, that we table it till such a time...
Re-postpone it.
Postpone it, excuse me, till such a time that our...
90 days or...
Up to 90 days for our in-house or our legal counsel to weigh in on the matter and see if they want to be here for a discussion.
Your support?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Itzel, supported by Commissioner Postel to table application 2396-025, uh, 021, to provide the applicant to modify the application and have it reviewed by the township attorney and request his presence when the matter appears on our agenda. With that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you want us to keep your presentation?
I would, yes.
Okay.
You're welcome to keep it, and when we come back, and if there's anything else that you need, my apologies to the audience members for the extension delay, but we'll try to keep it as short as possible, and thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, moving on to application 2401-0621, the general drive addition. And Ms. Howell, your report.
Thank you. The application is for a tentative and final site plan for, in addition to an existing industrial facility, the expansion will be to the rear of the property, so it won't be visible from general drive. The site is zoned, the IND Industrial District, where manufacturing, assembly, processing, and packaging is a permitted use. In addition to that building addition to the rear, the applicant is also proposing several site improvements. That would be the enclosure of the existing dumpster, so that would be screened, and nine trees would be located along the perimeter of the site and along general drive. We do note on page two of our review that three of those trees are Norway maple, and we recommend a different deciduous species. And on page three of our report, we recommend that the planning commission tonight grant tentative and final approval for the building addition contingent that another deciduous variety be provided for the three Norway maple trees. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have our engineering reports.
Yes, so for the utilities on site, given that it is just a building extension, there's already available water main, sanitary, and storm drainage on site. So there are no proposed changes to the water main, sanitary sewer, or currently the storm sewer layout on site. We would recommend that the applicant speak to Wayne County about any additional storm sewer changes that would be required in addition to a pre-treatment unit or additional detention capacity. But other than that, we also recommended tentative and final site plan approval pending final engineering approval.
And the applicants received the communication from the fire department. They have no, have found no deficiency in the plan from a public safety perspective, and is it the applicant who's here? Step forward, please, thank you.
I'm Matt Ray, Hefner Theory Architect, representing P&amp;L Foods.
Okay, did you have anything to add to the report, or? You brought some boards, and are those the same boards that have been in your application?
Simple addition of a...
Cold storage?
Cold storage, it's gonna, the purpose of the addition is to house a 30 by 60-foot dry-grind freezer, just because they anticipated additional, allow them to stock forward so that we don't have a problem with, as you saw in the news the other night, Taco Bell running out of food and closing stores.
Oh, no, I didn't hear that. I gotta go.
And that's after, you know, the logistic problems with delivery and service of the truck drivers.
So is there food distribution? Is that what they do?
Yes, they mainly serve Leo's Colly Island and other restaurants. And with me here, Leo, Stassenopolis, owner of Leo's Colly Island. It's just a simple addition of et cetera. This is it here. It's just to match the back of the building, same height and material, basically. The front end of the building was brick, I've re-signed for the opposite. So it's a simple three-wall addition on the back of the building.
So I drove by there recently, and there's, it looks like right where you're spec-ing it out, that there is a grass lawn-type area. And does that addition match up with the...
It's here.
No, it's where the addition's going, by the loading box, right?
It's the third and grass, yeah.
Right, so the footprint roughly matches the grass section right now?
Yeah, it looks a couple feet sharp, yeah.
And you're willing to consider the other trees that were recommended in the...
Yeah, we're working on it, it's something that's fast.
Okay. Any questions from the commission?
This the grass area we're talking about, John? Uh, no.
Actually, it's the building next door.
Sorry.
In front of all those trucks.
Doesn't look very green at that moment.
The, the application has the other building highlighted on the cover.
Yeah.
It's got the wrong building. Yeah, this one.
Exactly.
Oh, yes. So it's just gonna, yeah, okay.
If you were to get approval, how soon?
Would need Wayne County permit approval as well.
That would probably be the cog in the wheels getting Wayne County approval.
Right.
Hopefully you'll review the report and accept all the conditions.
Are we ready for a motion?
Yeah, you want me to make it?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Are we, pardon me?
You can make, yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve application number 2401-0621, the addition at 9030 General Drive, applicant P&amp;L Wholesalers. That's it.
Oh, you second, okay. Moved by Commissioner Dorsevitz and supported by Commissioner Itzel to grant tentative and fight site plan approval subject to conditions in the planner's report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Good luck, thank you.
And just for the commissioners, I would recommend you keep the, you know, the document that we received from the billboard application, because, you know, if you want to review this at their, when they ever do come back, you have all that material with you, so don't toss it out. Next is application 2332-0419, the Belesky Funeral Home. And Ms. Howell, your report.
Thank you. This is the third review for the proposed Belesky Funeral Home that is located at the corner of Five Mile and Hagerty Road. The site is approximately five acres and is zoned the OS Office Service District, where funeral homes are considered a principal permitted use. So there's no special land use required and no rezoning as part of this application. The zoning board of appeals did review this application last year, and on May 7th, they granted a variance to the 75-foot front yard setback. The site today is primarily vegetated, and there are 95 trees on site, and approximately a third of that vegetation at the southern end of the parcels will remain. Based on the number of inches removed, 196 inches are required to be replaced on site. The applicant is proposing 117. The remaining difference will either need to be added to the site or payment in lieu supplied to the township. In terms of access, access will be for vehicles from both Hagerty and Five Mile. Each access drive will be two-way traffic. It was previously recommended, when this application first came before the township, that the parties tried to reach an agreement to the religious institution to the east. Since no agreement has been reached between those parties, it's recommended that that access drive onto Five Mile would be a right turn only due to the number of curb cuts and the left, the left turn lane going westbound on Five Mile. The applicant is proposing a number of landscape areas along and throughout the site. On the eastern wall, there is a proposed retaining wall, approximately five feet in height. And we do recommend that there are some additional shrubs and native grasses added to the rain garden in the detention area, as well as those additional replacement inches if they can be provided on site. One item for consideration is that the zoning ordinance requires, based on the square footage of the proposed facility, 53 parking spaces, and the applicant is proposing 107, including eight barrier-free spaces. The previous application had proposed 159, so the, you know, reduction to 107 is significant. They are proposing that many spaces due to their experience in the industry for the use. There are a number of items that we list regarding the building design and architecture. The applicant has revised the elevations a bit to include some additional brick to meet the 75% masonry requirement. I do list, starting on page three, some of the additional recommendations from the planning commission from the past review, and that includes adding additional brick and architectural details, reducing the slope of the canopies, adding some additional trim along the windows and doors. The applicant has responded to that request and is put into the review letter. We also recommend that, since this is a corner location to mirror the corner on the other side of Hagerty, that a "Welcome to Plymouth Township" sign would be designed and landscaped. And lastly, for exterior lighting, lighting is proposed throughout the parking lot, but also along the building. Building lighting is 66 accent lights, and it's recommended that the number be reduced where possible, especially on the east elevation. So based on those findings, we do recommend tentative, and if the commission is in agreement with the outstanding items, that those be reviewed by the administrative review committee as this is a principal permitted use and conforms largely with the ordinance standards. Thank you.
And the applicant's received the communication from the fire department. There's no deficiencies from a public safety perspective, and the applicant is here?
Engineering report?
Oh, is there? There wasn't.
Is that here?
There was no engineering report.
There is an engineering report. I can go through it.
You do have it?
I do have one, yes.
Oh, okay, okay. Was it in our report?
It was not in the packets, but it was emailed out.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So from an engineering perspective, for site utilities, the site does have access to existing water main on the south end of Five Mile Road with a 12-inch water main, and then a 16-inch water main on the east side of Hagerty Road. The proposed plans currently indicate a connection to the 16-inch water main, which may be relocated based on discussion with the engineer. For the sanitary sewer, the township records currently indicate an 8-inch sanitary sewer that terminates at a manhole on the neighboring church property. So either the applicant would need to extend that sanitary sewer service to their property in order to provide a lead for service to their building, or there's a sanitary sewer on the west side of Hagerty Road, which can be extended to the southwest corner of Hagerty and Five Mile, and then a lead can be brought across under the road to the building, to service the building. In terms of storm drainage, the plans currently show onsite stormwater drainage, discharging to a bio-retention basin, and this would need to be permitted through Wayne County and approved prior to, prior to our approval. In terms of site paving, there's two drive approaches, like Laura mentioned, one off of Hagerty, one off of Five Mile. And then we have provided several preliminary engineering comments, especially pertaining to the water main and sanitary sewer, and the required easements that would need to be obtained if the sanitary sewer were extended from the church property to the existing, to the proposed property we're discussing. And those have all been discussed with the engineer as well. We also recommend tentative approval at this time, and then would be okay with doing an administrative review and final engineering review pending.
Thank you. Bob, do you have access to the color renderings of the building that was emailed out to us?
Is this what you gave me earlier?
No.
All right, one second. I have to, yeah, go ahead.
Because we'll be talking about, we can continue discussion, he'll, he'll look for it.
I have, I have a way I can bring it up.
Oh, okay.
I just, I'm gonna have to sign on to my email, and I don't want to type my password in with everyone looking. It's password.
And I, and I understand we're live on TV, so...
Oh, that's even worse.
Did you bring any building materials with you tonight?
No, the rendering showed coloring and the brick.
I think you said that the color would be different than what was on the rendering because of the supply chain issue?
So we think, we're comfortable with the color that we chose. We're thinking, if, if it has to be something different, we understand that that's going to take, you know, resubmitting and.
Oh, I saw it. Here it is. Watching me. Calling the doctor. Ah, I got it. Okay, here we go. This is what you wanted, right?
Yeah, thank you.
Can you make it a little bigger? Okay. Well, we're ready to hear your presentation.
Yeah, I'm Jesse Parkinson, Green Tech Engineering, 511-47 West Pineak Trail in Wixom. And I'm here with the owner, Jeff Beleski, 48161, Four Seasons Boulevard, Northville. Yeah, we've read the packet. We, we understand that we need to work with the township on getting administrative with revised landscaping and getting some of the landscaping items taken care of. Comfortable with that. We're comfortable with the letter, for the most part. We'd like to discuss a little bit this entrance off of Five Mile Road. Just wanted to give a little background. We've spent the better part of the year revising these plans, coming up with something a little more budgeted. And maybe we, we had a lot of underground piping, and we took that time to actually submit to Wayne County and get their approval on this stormwater design, so. Lot less piping underground. And wanted to let everybody know that the Five Mile entrance was never an issue with, that's the middle. We had to do some things with the Hagerty Road entrance, extending the decel lane and aligning those entrances, or that driveway, the driveway on the west side of Hagerty, so. We'd like a little discussion on that with ground and what the township feels about a traffic study or what the rationale is for that. We, we know that there's a traffic light 900 or 1,000 feet east of our site that slows the traffic down. We prefer to be able to do a left-out, left-in, as well as the right-out and right-in.
It's even more a left-in because the north side of the building, there's only about 26, 27 spots. The majority of the parking is going to be to the south of the building, and that's where.
So Laura, why, why did you suggest the, the right turn? Was it because there's so many curb cuts?
Yes, the, the number of conflict points that are, even though it's not in the township's jurisdiction to the north of Five Mile in Northville Township.
And then the church is here.
Right.
And then across the street.
So there are two curb cuts on the north side of Five. And then, you know, almost buttoning up to their parcels, the church curb cut.
Two curb cuts, including the church, right?
Two on the north side and then one on the south side.
Drawing only has one.
Two up there.
On the north side of Five Mile.
Talking about Northville Township, so?
Yeah.
One curb cut here, and then one for the church.
Right, and then on the other side of the street.
On the other side.
Northville Township.
There's that little shopping plaza.
Oh, 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 oh. Sorry, I misunderstood.
Between us and the light to the east, I think there's only three total curb cuts.
And one's McDonald's that was closed, and I know the real, he says it can't be sold as fast food.
That McDonald's closed?
Yeah.
Let me look. Yeah, the McDonald's is further down, further east.
Yeah, it's over.
So you're requesting left-in and out from Five? Does Wayne County, did they make, do they make a recommendation on that, or is that just our purview?
Wayne County, I believe, has reviewed this, correct, Jesse?
We have one issue to work out with sanitary sewer with Wayne County. Other than that, they were ready to issue a permit.
And did they say anything about the?
No, their only comment was aligning the driveways on Hagerty and extending a decel lane into that entrance.
And McDonald's is way down by the oasis.
There's a light right here.
Yeah, was it that again? Yeah, the light is somewhere right around here, isn't it?
It's near your left, right.
It's right near the right.
Oh, yeah, here it is.
It's in the middle.
Yeah, the chalkboard.
They can't align it. Laura, would it make a difference if they needed a curb cut to align to one or the others, if that's even possible, the ones on the north side?
I would recommend that a traffic study be prepared and that the engineer could review it.
And you're willing to have the traffic study done? Yeah. Well, why don't, why don't, yeah, I would suggest that that commission consider that, so we're not just depending on our own feelings about it.
Sure. Just a little background on that. Traffic study hopefully will show that we, we have a lot of our events between 6:30 and 7:00 at night after peak hours. Some of the additional events during the day will be getting over 11:30 or 12:00.
So most times if there's a service at the funeral home, it's going to be somewhere between 10:00 and 11:30. So you're not at a peak time. If we're doing a procession out of the funeral home, depending what direction we're going, if we're going eastbound, we're going to use that Five Mile exit so we can turn right. Whenever we do services out of the funeral home we have now, we have extra gentlemen, we hold off traffic, we stand there with flags and bring cars across so that no one can come across. If we're going north or west, we're going to come out of that Hagerty Road exit. That way, we can come up to a light and turn left so that we have safety actors and that. They're having, I've got people coming in, maybe after work, and if you're not going to turn left in there, they have to go to Hagerty, turn left, then you have all the people from Bosch coming out. And that's going to be hard for them to turn with all the traffic backed up than if they're turning, blocking the light and observing the situation.
Okay, well, we'll do a traffic study and see. Okay, do you have other, other concerns or issues that you wanted to raise at this point?
While these are technical things we think we can take care of, as, as far as the administrative review for the engineering and for the planning, the owner's requesting that we discuss the gateway sign to the township. We've had that on the plan before. I don't know, it was never discussed, I don't think it was discussed as to.
What we discussed? And I said, anywhere else I've gone this city, there's only the one coming in. Never one as you're leaving and that. And. More confusion are people drawing their faces towards that sign, there's going to be two or three signs.
Got to get closer to the mic.
You have to get closer to the mic. It's on the podium, so it's picked up on.
Follow what you were saying.
Okay, no. What I was saying is that whenever we talked before on the gateway sign, I had mentioned that there is one on the southwest corner at the Tudor time on that. So any place I've gone in the city, I have never seen two gateway signs coming into the city.
Township?
The township. Because it's going northbound, you're leaving and that.
So, so at the Tudor time, is it on?
Where the bushes are by the trees.
There?
No, no, that's our property.
Oh, sorry.
See the top stop? Just go over the sign.
Ah.
Right, yeah. There's a gateway sign.
Yeah, I believe you, I can't see it. Thank you. Too much traffic blocking it. Here it is, right here. Big old truck is blocking it, I can't see it.
Yeah, I know, I went back.
Yeah, you can see it's there.
It's right there. You can see it from here. Sorry. I'm not driving very good today.
I'm getting dizzy.
You're dizzy. Yeah, it's there. It is definitely there. He's right.
Do we want two signs saying "Welcome to Plymouth Township" in the same, these same intersections?
I'm trying to think.
Thought I had it, I kept, keep nailing it. It's right there. It's covered up by the.
There's one, a new one.
A new one.
At the Panera.
It's right, it's right there. If you come in from Washington, Alcoa.
Applicant develops.
Can't get it in. There it is, it's hard to see. This, this is it here, it's facing, it's facing the intersection.
Well, what's the commission's thoughts?
Laura, do we have precedent? As far as two signs versus one?
Back in Five Mile, there's one.
At Sheldon and Five Mile, there's, there's two.
There is two at Sheldon.
The gas station on the west side has the standard wooden, and then the Inn at St. John's has the pillar with the clock tower and it's Plymouth Township.
Sheldon, yeah.
But that's also an advertising sign. Because it's got, you know, the different facilities. So i- if we required him to put a sign up there, could he have his, his business name on the sign as well? Just as, as St. John's has?
Possibly within the limits of the ordinance. The Inn at St. John's was a PUD, so there was some additional flexibility with that in terms of the height and the placement.
Sorry, I'm all over the place here.
But you're heading in the right direction.
Are there any signs on this property? And monuments?
This one is the Inn at St. John's. Says Plymouth Township on the top of the clock. And this is the one at the gas station.
I think they did, well, just for advertising that they had it located.
Well, that was the purpose of that sign, is they wanted to advertise their, the different activities that were going on in that, because there's a restaurant, a golf course.
A golf shop.
Golf shop. The hotel.
You're not proposing any monument signs or any signs on your property?
Well, there's going to be a sign, of course, to promote the business and that.
It should be on this side.
Oh, it's right there on the corner. So you're proposing.
Is that the sign for us or no?
Yeah, so you're proposing your own, your own business sign on that corner.
Yeah.
Is there detail in the drawings of that sign?
No, there isn't, because we're not sure which way, direction you were going to allow. Oh, and that. I mean, we purchased the corner of the thing so we could get maximum exposure for the sign.
Julian Hagerty only has the one.
Want to just go to the building department then?
Uh, well, no, we'll review it. It might be done at the administrative level if we could go that route.
As far as like their, them having a sign out front, we don't have that detail.
Right, there's no signage that's approved as part of this plan, so they would need to go through the, the other channels with the township for review of that.
Well, let's leave that discussion off to the side for a minute. I want to talk about the renderings, because I have a couple of questions on it that had me a little confused when I read through it. So I noticed on the, on the actual plans, there's one elevation, and it's labeled on that elevation expansion wall. So are you planning on, on expanding this facility sometime in the future?
With what the projections were in that area, we couldn't eat more room at a later time. So I wanted to make sure everything was in place at that point. Do we foresee that happening in the next five, six years? Probably not, but we didn't want to be caught blind and all of a sudden then have to rip out and have different foundations ready to go. So they're putting it in at that point.
Is that one of the reasons why the parking has been reduced?
No, we did that because they didn't, we wanted maximum parking spots. There's no on-street parking there. I know that, I don't want people crossing over a busy street to get to our parking. So I wanted to maximize the land that we had to put parking in. They didn't want us to have so much parking, so we said, okay, we cut it back.
Do you have a garage?
There will be a garage. It's going to be in the back southeast corner.
And then you have also, and I don't, you know, I saw it on the plans, but you were, you were mentioning Drive It, and this other material starts with A. I know Drive It is sort of a branded name, and, so what's the other one? A different brand, or is it the same type of material? Does anyone know?
That's not my expertise. I'm sorry. My builder's, he's a Nashville gentleman, he's in Minnesota. I can call him on the phone if you want to talk to him. There wasn't video conferencing, so he said he would be accessible.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I was going to look it up, I was going to Google it, but I didn't have an opportunity, and then we lost power today, so I didn't have, didn't have any internet to, to go into that. And I guess the other question is, I had on the, and I don't know if anyone can answer it, but I did speak to Laura briefly on the, the wall that you would be building, you know, the, you mentioned a brand, I don't know if it's a brand name, but Laura, you said it's more of a masonry product that they're putting ready, ready something it was called?
Oh, the, the retaining wall?
Ready wall, yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty typical of a wall.
So eventually you'll, you, those building, that building materials will be available for either back here or at the administrative review committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my problem.
Okay.
It's not a wall work, it's a seat, so we're not making, you know, it's all pretty natural, you know, blind in with the light savings, and that's a environmental basis.
Mr. Blesky, is, is it common for funeral homes to have crematoriums on site?
No, it's against the law in Michigan. You can't own cemetery or crematorium.
So, because, you know, some of the folks at the church next door are concerned about that, that, that this is just a ruse, if you will, for a crematorium, and so.
We have no plans for a crematorium.
You can't, you can't own both, is that what you said?
Not in Michigan.
So, funeral home can't own a crematorium, and what was the other?
Or a cemetery.
So, how does, how do they get away with that?
They have two different owners, they have gates around the place.
Okay, so out of respect for the residents that had come to a prior meeting and voiced concerns from the church, I just wanted to confirm so no crematorium could ever happen at your location at this site adjacent to the church next door, is that correct?
That's correct, I mean, it's not even zoned that.
Okay, just wanted to.
It would have been part of the zone.
Because they came to the meeting and expressed concerns, so I just, out of respect for them, I want to make sure that that's clear.
Yeah, someone started a rumor that that was going to happen, was never in the plans.
Thank you.
So, maybe you can, Bob, can you put up the renderings again, and so the commission can look at that?
The color ones?
Yes, please, thanks.
Uh, let's see.
If it's easy, hopefully. Yes.
The Alora material is, is just a brand of fiber cement siding.
Oh, okay, so it's just a brand.
Mm-hmm.
I suspected that.
Sorry, I am challenged today.
Well, some of the, some of the questions that I had may not be able to be answered to, today on this, but, I mean, we did get his comments, you know, particularly on the masonry, because of, you know, previous meetings when you were here, that was a desire of the commission is to see more brick, and it has gotten more brick. But it's sort of, well, let the commission see, once we have the renderings, what their thoughts are.
Which one do you want? You want me to zoom on one of these?
Zoom the top one, I guess, for now, just to. So, are there any comments on this side of the building, this elevation? Maybe you can go down to the bottom two?
The, what appears to be second story is all just skylight there.
Sorry, my doorbell just rang.
So, comments on the use of.
The view from Hagerty.
Brick, is there enough, not enough?
Is, is there a second story?
There's a few offices in the front, and in the back, there's offices.
Not a residence?
No, well, no. All windows are there for the natural light, like you have, so for the angle won't be blinded light in people's faces, we have to have a certain.
So, from what the architect said, he's talking about load-bearing walls, and it is impossible to, to put the brick, but I'm confused by that, that response, because it's really just a veneer. So, I'm not sure how that would impact the structural integrity of the wall. So, maybe if it, most likely we'll go to the administrative review committee, Laura, that you could get the architect on the phone on that. It, it depends on what the commission feels. I mean, do you feel there needs more masonry work or not? Because otherwise, we won't go down that path. But I'm assuming from the report.
Want me to make a phone call?
You mean, he's available now for this?
Yes, he's available.
Oh, okay.
Up to you, I can put it up.
Well, what, what do you think?
What percent brick is it right now compared to our?
Did you make the calculation, Laura? The percentage of brick?
No, I think the architect stated it ju- just over seventy-five percent.
It says here, previously, the applicant did not comply with its seventy-five percent brick masonry requirement. The revised building elevations now slightly exceeds it by wrapping the brick band around the base of the building.
I think that was in, was in the report, he's up to eighty percent brick now. From what? Eighty percent?
Eighty percent, yeah, it just says.
Doesn't look like eighty to me.
I think it would help if we had the building materials here to get an idea of what the non-brick areas will really look like.
Well, they're, they're Drive It, it'll look like a, like a stucco. And you're planning on, on painting the, the Drive It material to a sim, you know, complementary color to the brick?
Correct.
Yeah. The color renderings, to me, look a little more appealing than when I look at the actual building plans. I think it's the angles of the, you know, on the roof line, and so when you see it from a sort of a three-quarter perspective, it looks different. Well, what's the commission's thoughts?
Don't have perspective on the east side.
It was pretty good today, but hasn't been to Laura.
Useful to see the east side if we could.
Can you email? Can you email it to Bob?
Yeah, you could email it to. Yeah, but actually, just my last name at Gmail. It's easier. Oh, yeah. Password is, password one, two, three.
Thought it was password.
So, Laura, are the, with the reduced parking, he still meets the parking requirements for the building?
The applicant did reduce the parking to one oh seven, but that, that actually exceeds the required parking, because they only, they only need fifty-three by code.
Oh, okay.
And only two barrier-free spaces is per ordinance as well?
Yeah, per code, and they're proposing eight.
I think the only outstanding issue is the, what the commission feels about the masonry coverage and the sign.
Didn't they already, I mean, didn't they exceed the seventy-five percent?
Eighty percent is what you heard?
That's what his calculations, I mean.
Yeah, he said, the architect says it's at eighty.
Why is that an issue?
I'm just asking what you think. We, we kept asking for more brick, and, and Laura's report raises the issue about, you know, some trim work above the windows and that kind of, some architectural interest, and then the architect's responses included in her report, so are we satisfied with that?
I am.
Typically, we, you know, there aren't any public comments at this stage of approval, but is there anyone here that is, wanted to say something about this? Okay. Uh, yeah, if you could, while we're.
Thank you for the opportunity to see you, it's great to finally see you, sir. My name is Christina Zilos, I'm a resident of Lebanonia, but I attend church at the Nativity of the Virgin Mary Greek Orthodox Church, right next door to your proposed development. I'm here with several church members, and we just have a few concerns that we want to reiterate. So, first of all, by way of background again, sir, because I don't know if you're aware of this, but we're a thriving parish comprised of hundreds of families spanning several generations. We've been at the corner of Five and Haggerty since the seventies, and we have deep roots in the community. So, our, one of our main concerns is the traffic at Five and Haggerty, like you touched on. It's already a high-traffic area. The April twenty nineteen McKenna report characterized it as, quote, "a traffic danger due to the number of curb cuts on Five Mile and their proximity to the intersection." It noted that the proposed addition of another accessway on Five Mile was, quote, "problematic" and, quote, "strongly recommended the owner of the proposed development to seek from our church a shared access easement." We haven't heard anything from the owner. The last time we were here in March, the commission was kind enough to, to state that they were going to reach out to the owner to ask that he reach out to us in, in the spirit of being a good neighbor, to have some dialogue about our concerns about the crematorium and about the traffic, the traffic issue. But again, we haven't heard anything, so this is the first we're understanding of your plan regarding several months now. So, I'm glad to hear from you, and thank you to the commission for asking him specific questions about the cremation issue, because that's obviously very, very concerning for us. So, anyhow, back to the traffic, the traffic issue. So, contrary to that April twenty nineteen McKenna report, there is still a driveway being proposed for Five Mile. So, our request to you is that you not allow a driveway on Five Mile, and that you allow it only on Hagerty. We believe that this will not be an undue hardship to the owner, because the owner will already have an accessway on Hagerty. My understanding is the road, the Five Mile road is under the jurisdiction of the county, I think, I'm not certain, but irrespective of the county's decision, I, we believe you have a right to, to speak on the manner, on the matter, and you probably know more about that area than the county does. So, we didn't know that the owner was petitioning Wayne County, we never got notice of that, we would have objected there too, like we're objecting here, so I don't even know if Wayne County is aware of these issues at Five, Five and Hagerty. So, that is our first request, that that not be allowed there on Five Mile, just be allowed on Hagerty, for the good of, not just our church, but the good of the community. So, some of the times that Mr. Blesky, you were mentioning are high-traffic times for your funeral home, those are very high-traffic times for our church services. We have church services not just on Sunday morning, which would coincide around from ten to eleven-thirty, which is around the time you mentioned, but also several services, often throughout the week, in the mornings and in the evenings. There's a service going on right now, which is why our priest couldn't be here. Our priest strongly, strongly objects to a driveway on Five Mile, and he would have been here, but not for the church service right now. So, I did want to note that. And then, the second thing we were going to talk about today was the cremation service, which again, I'm very glad to hear that you will not pursue. What we want very much is if you could please condition your approval of any site plan on the, like, condition it on a condition that there not be any cremation services or crematorium ever pursued in the future, because I, although I understand what the owner is saying, that right now it's not zoned in such a way as to allow that, there is nothing preventing him from at some point in the future seeking cremation services if, let's just say, he changed your mind. I'm not suggesting he have improper motives or anything, but you may change your mind in the future in petition for cremation services. So, like we mentioned before, we have strong religious objections to a crematorium or any sort of cremation services. The Orthodox Church holds that the body is sacred even after death, and thus cremation is not acceptable. So, the notion that cremation services might take place at some point in the future, within a few meters of our church, is highly offensive to us and a significant affront to our deeply held religious beliefs. So, we would ask that that be placed in writing, please, from the owner and from the commission, that that not be allowed at any point in the future there. And then finally, just as an administrative manner, we received notice of this meeting yesterday from Ms. Laura, so thank you, thank you for that, I think it was you, Ms. Laura, so thank you for that notice. We kind of scrambled at the last minute to prepare something. My understanding is that we're supposed to have, as neighbors of this facility that's going up, we're supposed to have fifteen days' notice, I thought, of these sorts of proceedings in writing, like via mail, in order for us to, you know, prepare ourselves and, and maybe have some other people join us. We would have had more people join us had we had a little more notice. So, I would just ask it, please, we could be given more notice, which I think is what the applicable rules state. I think we're supposed to have fifteen days' notice via mail, which is what we were expecting, so we're kind of been monitoring the mail over the last few months, and we haven't received anything about this meeting in the mail. We just, we just learned via email from Laura yesterday. So, we just, moving forward, if, if you could let us know via mail in advance, or whatever your rules are, please let us know in advance, so that we can come prepared and do what we need to do. So, thank you so much for the opportunity again, I thank the owner for being candid with us about your plans to not have a cremation service, and thank you to the commission, and if there are any questions of need, please feel free to let me know.
Well, let me, let me just respond to some of what you said. So, there is no requirement, you know, to, to notice this particular meeting, because there isn't a public hearing. You saw, I think you were here since the beginning of the meeting, so you saw one public hearing, that was notice, it's required. But at this point of the development, he had, the way this is zoned by right, he has the, you know, there was no public hearing, because by right, he, he can, he's putting a, a, a operation that is permitted in that particular zoning district. And typically, we don't have public hearings. You know, I wouldn't necessarily call on people at this stage, because as long as he meets the ordinance requirements, that addresses the concerns of the commission, then again, he'll, he'll get his, he'll get his approval. But we're always encouraging people to come to the meeting, so we'll recognize if, if I see somebody, you know, that's been here lengthy, and, and I know there was concern here, particularly on the crematorium, that, that's why Commissioner Barberina had asked that question as well, because we've heard it multiple times, who wanted to rest assured. And as far as the use of a crematorium, I mean, you heard the applicant say, well, funeral homes can't own a crematorium, and it wouldn't be permitted in that zoning district in the first place, and if he did by some chance say, I don't want a funeral home anymore, I want to put a crematorium in, he would have to ask for a rezoning. Well, there's another public hearing for that, not only here, but also it then goes to the board of trustees. So, there are, there's no public hearing at that point, but they're, like us, they're encouraging people to come to the meeting, so there's multiple times that that should ever happen, which is extremely doubtful. It would be like, to put that as a condition of approval, would be like wearing suspenders and a belt at the same time, because there's so many layers of approvals that would have to take place at that point. And I'm not sure, Laura, if, if Wayne County had approved a curb cut, can we, can we deny a curb cut?
I'm not sure. Trish D., do you have any insight on that?
I'm, I'm not sure that we can deny either. We've never, I guess, been in the scenario where we've considered that.
Because the township does not have, you know, any authority over the roads. We're a township, so that rests on the county. And I don't believe the county has a requirement to have a public hearing of any type when they're looking. That's an engineering issue. We did ask them, and they're willing to do a traffic study, so we can operate from a point of, of information rather than. a point of, of information, rather than, well, there's a lot of curb cuts, we shouldn't have any others, which may be a legitimate concern, but, you know, we need to have some justification to, to say you can't do a curb cut. And that's if we can legally even do that, we'd have to investigate that. So hopefully, that answers your concerns, and, you know, appreciate you coming in and expressing those, those concerns again.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
Sure, thank you. Any other comments? Okay. So Bob, did you get that rendering up? Is that up there now?
Which one, which one do you want?
The east side, I think.
The east side.
That says east.
John wanted to see.
Oh, that's it.
The rendering?
This one.
Right.
Northeast and southeast. Want me to zoom it?
Yeah, it would help.
What kind of landscaping is around that, or is that going to be the actual view?
Well, maybe the applicant can come back. Can you talk about the landscaping? We did get the landscaping plan.
Just trying to put the landscaping plan with this.
I'm sorry, didn't hear the question.
She was questioning about the landscaping, but I referred it to the landscaping plan.
Thank you.
So it looks like there's the drive-in material there, and it's painted two different colors?
Right.
I just wanted to make sure it was the same material and didn't indicate something different. Thoughts on the, from the commission?
That's 80% brick.
I think he's talking about the entire building.
Right. I still, I still have a hard time believing it's 80%, the entire building.
Doesn't appear that way, does it?
No, it doesn't.
Perhaps the Administrative Review Committee could...
Look at it.
Could look at that.
Is that, is that second story cantilevered out? It's hard for me to tell. If it is cantilevered, we can find out. I, I think, I don't know, to talk to the architect at this point, there's, it's, I think we'd have to look at those. Do you have this in hard copy as well?
This is not a...
The renderings? If you have...
I'll forward it on to you.
Yeah, forward on to Laura, because I think, Laura, it's easier to tell when you're in hard copy than you are from the...
Are those the garage doors that we're looking at there on the, towards the east?
It's a carport, but we took that down.
So that, that's, in the center, that's not a big window. It's just a little window at the top with two different, that bottom portion is a different color than the surrounding drive-in?
Second story?
The second story, the window, that's sort of at the apex of the roof.
It looks like that's how we have it, man, but we can do it all the same color.
Other thoughts?
Almost two shades of the same basic color adds interest.
Yeah, it would look bland if it were one color.
More bland.
More bland.
That other side, is that the best you can do?
John, do you have any comment?
I would just hope that in administrative review, we can look at the, or the amount of brick surface can be calculated.
Are you able to do that, Laura?
We, we can request those specifications from the architect. There's also some stone on the, the west elevation that would count towards that requirement as well. Just maybe because so much of the brick is at the ground level, and it being a two-story building, you just see so much tan.
And actually seeing the material would help.
Yeah, that's usually what we require.
Yeah. So is the architect able to, so I'm presuming the material is somewhere here locally, that he could order samples of it, that the, that can be looked at?
That is a requirement.
It is. So now we're, we're back to the sign, unless there are other issues on the renderings?
Correct the sign, and then the replacement trees, either on onsite or payment and lieu for the difference.
So what are your thoughts on the replacement trees?
Here was the thought that we could put some of the trees in the Haggerty Road right away, there's a pipeline there. Yes, pipeline. We'd be willing to work with the Administrative Review and either place the trees and also have payment.
We could do that at the review committee level?
Correct.
All right. And what about the, what are, what's the commission's thoughts about the sign? So he's proposing to put a sign that just has the name of his, his business.
What if it also said Plymouth Township? As a suggestion? Because there is a sign saying, "Welcome to Plymouth Township" across the street, but perhaps if it also said Plymouth Township?
Sort of like what the DFCU Credit Union has done? And who else has done that? The ICE Arena has done that.
Right.
And then underneath would be Plymouth Township.
That would be one way to approach it, yeah.
Do you have another way, Bob? No. No? Well, I just didn't know what I was...
No, sure.
Would you be agreeable to that?
Any thoughts, Laura? It's the pleasure of the commission.
Okay. Well, with that, are we ready to grant tentative and final site plan, subject to final review by the Administrative Review Committee?
Yes.
That's subject to the traffic study?
Oh, and subject to the traffic study.
For the curb cut, right.
For the curb cut.
That's it's a curb cut, but if it's right turn only.
Yeah.
Who's going to do it? I have to write it down, so...
Let's go for it.
Anyway?
Well, the chair, I've never made a motion.
Right.
But if you're stuck, I'll make a motion, I'll make the motion. So I move to grant final site plan approval to application 2332-0419, the Bolesky Funeral Home, subject to conditions in the planner's report, reviewed by the Administrative Review Committee, that would include a traffic study.
And a detailed calculation of the masonry.
Masonry coverage.
And the sign?
And the sign contained the business name and Plymouth Township.
And the rest of the items in the review committee?
Yeah, I said, subject to the...
Okay. Support?
Moved by Commissioner Sobolski and supported by Commissioner Barberina to grant tenant, to grant final site plan approval to set application, subject to set conditions, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Tyler.
Okay, good luck.
Looking forward to it. Make sure you're done.
Sure.
Short break.
Pardon?
Short break.
A break. Five minutes is long enough for you?
Certainly.
Set the timer. Put your name on the blackboard. Plymouth Township Planning Commission will reconvene and we're moving on to application twenty-three ninety-four dash zero-five-twenty-one, the Purcell Place condo development. And Ms. Howe, your report.
Thank you, Chairman Sobolski. This application has been reviewed several times by the planning commission for eight detached, single-family homes at four-six-two-zero-zero North Territorial Road. It is a cluster housing development with previous approval from the Board of Trustees. And since the June meeting, several changes have been made to the site plan. That includes a few additional shrubs along the forty-foot greenbelt along, in our, or North Territorial, four arbor byde and two summer suite bushes. As we recommended before, this is an important viewing area and seating area. We do recommend that some additional landscaping considerations be given to enhance that. The surface also where the historic marker and benches would go is currently proposed as grass, recommending a decorative poured concrete or brick pavers to enhance the area further. We also think that there's several opportunities for additional landscaping along the detention pond and north of the cul-de-sac. No changes have been made since the last submission. The applicant also proposed a shared central mailbox system to the west of the cul-de-sac. It is a beige mailbox and is shown on sheet LP-two. Based on what the planning commission has approved in past submissions, recommend that the mailbox be more decorative. The company that the applicant is proposing to go through for that central mailbox offers different add-ons to enhance the architectural features of the mailbox. So that includes caps and pedestals. And it also comes in a variety of colors, including black, brown, and dark green. So we recommend that the planning commission do provide some additional direction to the applicant on that. It was also requested at the last meeting that the site plan specify the maximum number of trees that the adjacent homeowners could expect to be installed on their property in order to provide that additional screening. The applicant has provided a letter dated June twenty-first that states, "As a condition of the approval, the developer shall agree to plant up to six evergreens off-site on the eastern property owner's fronting on Burning Tree Street of the Portsmouth neighborhood in their rear yards that is adjacent to the development as permitted by such neighbors." So we are asking that the applicant clarify if that is a total of six evergreens or if it is one per household and the size or species of such evergreens. We also just ask for clarification if there's going to be retaining wall to the north of lot unit number eight. And if yes, then those details be provided to the commission. In terms of building materials, we recommended that the applicant clarify the maximum amount of EPIS that they would propose on any elevation for the future homes. The previous elevation that was submitted did contain a significant portion of EPIS compared to what the township has approved in the past. As only one building type was provided, we're also recommending that at a minimum, there would be three housing models and that no two housing models should be adjacent to each other. This is a very similar or standard approach to architecture in our residential subdivision. And it was also recommended by the commission at the last meeting that the rear covered porch details with that be provided to illustrate how usable the rear yard will be and how a typical home footprint would fit on each lot, understanding that the homes would be between thirty-two hundred and forty-four hundred square feet in size. I'm also asking for clarification if there will be exterior lighting on both the garage and the front porch areas. Regarding the signage, the entry signage into the subdivision, a six-foot stone column is proposed to the west of the access drive off North Territorial with a metal plate that says Purcell Place, cut out. The detail of that stone column also notes that it will be of brick material. So we're recommending that it be clarified if it's stone or brick. And in the past, the township has traditionally approved engraved masonry to ensure a long-lasting, durable entry feature for that HOA. No accent uplighting or landscaping at the base of the sign has been proposed. The commission also previously recommended that the established date be incorporated into that entrance sign. It does not appear that that was added. And the clear vision triangle must be illustrated on the site plan to ensure that that proposed column is outside of any sightlines. So those items regarding the entry feature signage is, yeah, several, several things for discussion this evening. And then lastly, just a legal escrow must be supplied to the township building department for, to initiate the review of the master deed and cluster housing documents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. An engineer report.
So from a utility, site utility perspective, we've discussed these comments with the applicant and the engineer. And there are existing concerns of the depth of water main in a couple of locations and the depth of the sanitary sewer. But we do believe these can be resolved within the engineering review portion and don't necessarily hold up site plan on our end. In terms of storm discharge, there haven't been any changes since the previous submission. So there's still a detention basin to the north of unit eight and the stormwater would be all going to that basin and then exiting to Tonquish Creek. The site paving, same as before, it is a private road that exceeds seven fifty feet, so it requires special approval by the planning department. And then, other than that, we've included several engineering comments for the applicant to address. But we have also recommended tentative and final approval on the engineering end contingent, conditional upon all of these engineering comments to be, to be modified and resubmitted for our review.
Okay, thank you. And the applicant receives a fire department communication. There's no issues from a public safety perspective and the applicant is here.
Commission, thank you for having us come back in this evening and present to you our updated plan. I'll pass these elevations out when I may. I'll go through and address each of the comments made by the. So there's three, just give clarification. There's four sets of homes there, those have all been built in your community. I'm sure you guys are aware that some of those are in Sherwood. And then the other one was, I wanted to give you a sense of a ranch model, that the ranch was built on Emmer. I'm going to have Fadi speak to a couple of these items, such as number six. And I will talk regarding number eight. So he and I might interchange between this, just so keep a sequence of her comments down. So why don't you speak regarding number, number six?
Number six, what do you mean by the transition to the street to be provided? I mean, which, we ended by like lot unit number eight and you mean just like ninety degrees into the cul-de-sac? Yeah, that's fine.
I should have announced, Fadi Kalouso, the engineer with the, with this project.
We've been here so many times.
Yeah.
You look more than familiar.
Okay. The landscaping, screening, and buffer. As, as was pretty clearly pointed out, and the last time we presented this, as it's specific to the landscaping, Brian Devlin, who's a landscape architect, did the, the planning of this, of this landscape plan, you know, used every possible area that he felt was reasonable to plant, underbrush, deciduous trees, pines, and all the assortment of, of trees that are specifically stated in the, in the landscaping list throughout this site plan, even to the tune of adding another fifty-two or fifty-four additional trees and, and pines in and above the amount that was, is required through the tree replacement. So, you know, we, we feel we've gone beyond the standard and we've far exceeded the standard that's been set forth by the township. There are certainly always some improvements that we can make and certainly I would agree, and I'll jump around a little bit, only in regards to landscaping, that we can add some, and this is more in, in, in tune with the, with the brick pavers to the, to the historical sign plaque. We can add some stamped concrete element. As you can see on your plan, it, is there possibly we can pull the plan up that might be easier?
What, you emailed them?
Uh, no, no, not that one. This, that's unrelated.
They'll submit the.
The plans that were submitted for this project.
So, let's see, they're in the package.
And I think the best one to pull up, Bob, would probably be.
Landscape.
Landscape plan at the end. P-one, maybe? No, P.
Two or P-three, I think.
Just, just to.
What page was it?
It's not in the application packet. It's on the, the website under current projects.
Oh, okay.
The separate PDF.
Oh, okay. I don't get what you were doing there. Okay. Want to see, Leon?
Go to N-L-P.
It's down on page fifteen or something.
Yeah, it's way back.
This, this one? Yeah, this one.
Right there.
Okay, yeah, perfect. Thank you. So benches, I'm going to talk loud so it picks up on the mic here. The bench, the, the monument plaque has built, really been amplified with some benches and some, I would think Brian put nice, a small hedge row of, of trees there. We could take that section there, that cement section, that kind of abuts right to the sidewalk to the north, and we could probably add that as a stamp.
Thank you very much.
We could add some, a brick paper element there. I say brick paper, let me restate that. We'll add a stamped concrete, because I can keep in line with my cement guy and have him lay a imprint over that. And something to demarcate it a little bit different than the remaining sidewalk that we see running down here. I think that would accent it well. The, and I'll jump around here, but I'll stay in the landscaping sort of venue. Here's a tree, here's the, I walked all these homes here. Talked to lot forty, talked to lot thirty-nine, I don't think I talked to thirty-eight, they weren't home, talked to thirty-seven and thirty-six, and then went to thirty-five. So my, my plan was to meet with these folks and say, you know, here's my site plan, and I took the landscape plan at the time, and said, here's what I'm going to look like when I'm finished. Where do you want me to put some trees back there? And none of the homeowners had, you know, had a specific need of where they wanted the tree because, or I, I, I offered up a pine, but certainly it could be a deciduous tree as well. So my position was, well, I'll come back to you after I finish this hedge up and this furnish, finish these trees out here, and let's see if there's some areas that I can supplement. So what we're committing to is we will do six pines along here. Now, I've thought about this today, and it doesn't necessarily have to be six pines, it could be six deciduous. Because I can tell you, this lady over here, she got a sandbox over here, and she's not going to let me put a pine in her sandbox. There's no reason to it. But I think she has other room here to maybe put a nice deciduous tree. So I want to have the flexibility. And to clarify, I'm going to provide six evergreens or six deciduous trees to these areas over here as, as the homeowners will permit. And, you know, I'm going to donate the tree to them, I'm going to plant it, but of course it's going to be theirs to maintain because it's on their property. So that's what I've agreed to do, dating back to the couple of meetings that we've done before, when it was as a result of my discussion and meeting with the, with these folks. Certainly with this pier sign over here, now we're talking about monument signs. So let's stay on the landscape and see if there's anything else. Let's talk about this addition over here. So the suggestion is that we add a little bit more landscaping here. You know, with, with the standard of what I've added beyond, of course, I've added a minimum landscape requirement that you have, and then I've added the extra fifty-two trees. You know, we're getting to a point that you, we just don't have much. I'd rather have more quality landscaping, having ample amount of spacing, than to add more, more landscaping and have potentially future problems. Now, listen, I'm not a landscape architect, okay? But I rely on Brian, he's, he's, he's an expert at what he does, and I think he's been clear in, in using his best professional experience to add these trees where, where they need to be and create a, a buffer of trees and shrubs and evergreens that will, you know, will be meaningful in the future. There was a suggestion of two more additional trees on the North Territorial right-of-way from the site, from the, to enhance the site from the neighborhood to the south. Maybe we'll do that landscape plan, that's what we can do here. Yeah, I'll add two more deciduous trees here. I think that'd be a nice addition. You know, listen, whatever I can add to this project that enhances the adjacent neighbors, as well as enhances the current, future homeowners, it's, it's good. And, and certainly I have, looking here, this is probably a low shrubs here, I'll have some room to put a couple of deciduous trees.
I think, Laura, you're talking about the right-of-way, right? Within the right, which way, I mean, between the sidewalk and the curb?
Right.
Hold on, Laura, you want to hear, or you want to hear?
The two trees.
I'll put these two trees along here.
But there's a sanitary sewer, so I would.
Okay.
I would, just that, I mean, I wouldn't, there, there is a sanitary sewer between the curb and the sidewalk, so that's going to be an issue in the case they want to.
Or do we want to do the sanitary?
Typically, we don't like landscaping in the easements, just from a maintenance perspective, and it's something DPS has mentioned in the past, but it just depends, I can't, I don't know how much space there is, but typically the easement's ten feet on either side of the sanitary sewer.
Yeah, that's probably over twenty-five.
Yeah.
So we can add it in, within that forty foot.
Why don't I put a couple of deciduous here? Because I've only got a deciduous here, here, this must be an existing one that I'm keeping. We'll put a couple of deciduous, see these two here, maybe we'll extend one more, two more here, and we'll make them equal distance apart. But we want to do that for on record. So we got two more deciduous trees that we'll put up into that area. Mailbox decorative, I'm open to it, let's do that administratively. I'm sure the company has something a little cooler. I will tell you, it was a change. Initially said that we're going to put the mailbox up in front here, I didn't think it through. You know, I got a mailbox in front of, in, in Tuscany. In hindsight, I should have put it in the back. The problem is people pull up, they park right there, they get out of their car, and you, you, you know, you get two people that do it at the end of the day. and you, 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 you know, you get two people that do it at the end of the day, and you're blocking traffic. And it's just human nature that people are gonna park, they're not, they don't wanna park in somebody's driveway. So I think, and it was brought up by Brian, why don't we just put it all the way in that back, in that cul-de-sac? Come around there, people can park in the cul-de-sac, get out of their car. I don't know how we have this position, if they can actually get into the box by reaching in from their, from their, um, from their, uh, car, but I'll, we'll do something that, you know, is purposeful. And we'll look at some other material, other boxes, and hopefully we can handle that administratively. We'll get to the costs on the estimates, make that part of our final package. I'm gonna let, um, Fadi talk about this retaining wall in lot eight.
There's not gonna be any retaining walls. It's gonna slope from the edge of lot eight into the, the pond. Not enough, so we're not going to do a retaining wall.
Your number ten, building design and architecture, we're fine. We agree. We're gonna do masonry. I'll discuss the, uh, the materials in a bit here. We'll go through these other ones. Um, and it's my understanding, you know, we'll, I, we'll go on record just saying we're gonna adhere to the township requirements for, uh, for masonry and cement, uh, products on the homes.
That's number ten, right?
Yes. Housing models. So as I shared with you before, this is gonna be a little different than maybe, it is gonna be different than with Tuscany. Tuscany, I picked out all the, uh, models. I had two models, two roof lines, I'll call it, okay? We have different brick colors, and it turned out that way. It was different brick color, uh, throughout the development, which is great because it really added a lot of contrast between units. This will be different from that, and that, they won't, we're not gonna dictate somebody's roof line. I'm gonna let people personalize their, their, their product. I'm gonna allow them to use their own architect if they want. And so bring some significant, to, to bring some, um, variety, if you would. Now, we will have standards that set forth by the HOA on square footage size. We'll have standards set forth on masonry, per the township's requirements. Um, and we're gonna have an HOA that's gonna sign off on the architectural controls. We're gonna have to have that. We would do that. So, cause we wanna have the homes at least to be in character. Um, do I think there could be a wide, wide variety of looking houses from a very light brick to a very dark, to very dark stone? There could very well be. As you can see in those homes that we presented there, those were all built by Leo Solve in your community. Uh, you know, we got three Colonials there. In our community, there's a lot of Colonials being built. You see some Cape Cod's. I do think we'll see some Cape Cod's in this neighborhood. And I think with eighty-five foot lots, we're gonna see some significant branches in this, in this subdivision. So the designs will kind of take on what the finish elevation. I will go, it, it's fair to say that I don't wanna limit my ability to put two houses that are identically designed, side by side. I will go on record and say, we will not let them have the same brick color. Because somebody might come up with a really cool design, and, and listen, Tuscany, by example, is only two models out of eighteen, and it's a very successful looking project. And the way we differentiated it was through these different stone colors, masonry and, uh, and brick. So I would go on record and say, yeah, there could be no two homes that have the same identical brick color that are side by side. Um, you know, I, I, for now, I think, not knowing what the people want, I think that's the fairest way that I can present it to you at this point. And we will have a variety of homes. I mean, I think it's only likely, I mean, in, in most of your developments, when you have, um, this type of, of, of flexibility, if you would, the customers are, are kind of probably, are, are, are gonna bring their own likes and, you know, it's kind of the own, their own style, if you would. So I think that will make up to, to, for a nice, uh, a, a nice development here.
I just have to tell you, I think that's a good idea, because I can tell you, I've had two people come up to me, never had this before, on the reserve project, and they told me they thought it looked like tract housing, that there wasn't enough, uh, differences.
Tuscany?
Tuscany.
Real?
Yeah. So I-
They sit the track? Wow, amazing.
Well-
And what were they concerned about? The, oh, the roof lines and that?
Yeah, they said, I think that was, I think you hit the nail on your he- on the head. I think it was the roof lines. I did tell them, have you been inside? They hadn't gone inside.
Houses are-
And I told them, no, you should go inside and look at it.
I mean, yeah, maybe not don't like the light inside, but still look inside for sure. Um,
But I think people do like the variety unless you really have a stellar standard design, you know? Uh, I think people like the, the customization.
I agree. I learned something from Tuscany, and, and that's why we're kind of taking this role here. Um, the, I haven't had any complaints from Tuscany, but there is, you know, what's going for that is that's got great topography. If you notice the roof line, step down, step down all the way. So the roof lines are not all equal, so it really makes a difference when you're driving through there.
Well, and I think the other thing is when they know what the prices are, they expect to see something better.
People always expect to get a lot for the money they're spending. And, and you know, something they deserve, because they're spending a lot of money, and that's something. So this is a solution to that, let's say, okay?
Yes.
We're gonna have a project that people can bring their creativity to the, to the, uh, to the project and, and be a part of the design.
Well, that's my point, that I think you're definitely heading in the right direction with this one.
So the rear covered porch, let's talk about that. So I don't know who's gonna have a rear covered porch right now. I don't know if people are gonna have a lanai. I don't know if people are gonna have a seasonal room. It's part of their design. They're gonna have to meet the fifty-foot setback requirement. We understand that. If you look at our design, if you look at our, uh, grade profiles, the fifty feet that you have behind these houses, it slopes pretty good. There's not a flat, really flat area, but it slopes in such a manner that if somebody wanted to put a playscape back there, although we kind of gotta decide whether we're gonna allow playscapes in the back of these units, but they wanna have another element back there, that you have a flatter area to do so. Irrespective of that, you have a pretty good open space. You gotta have to realize, the back of those properties to the bottom of the, of the east property line, back of the building, to the east property line, is fifty feet, and by eighty-five feet wide. So it's about four thousand square foot. It's a pretty good sized backyard. Um, that will live differently. It won't live like the big Colonials that, uh, you see around the township in, you know, Country Club Village. But it certainly won't live like Tuscany with a, with a thirty-foot, uh, backyard. So, and, and on a, in a forty-five foot footprint versus an eighty-five foot footprint. So that, that is, you know, I, I think, you know, I, I would hope that as long as we're meeting the code of the setback, the rear here setbacks, which we have to, the design features fits within that envelope, that we kind of revisit that on a, on a home-by-home basis. And, um, um, you know, I, uh, if people enclose that porch, from what I understand with your new ordinance, even if they enclose it and make it a seasonal porch, they make it a year-round porch, it still has to have the fifty-foot rear red setback, correct? Under the new ordinance that you adopted?
If you enclose it?
Yeah, let's say if we did a seasonal, four-season room. It's a fifty-foot-
I'm sure once it's enclosed, Laura.
If it, if it's a four-season room, then it's a regular building addition. And it would have to adhere by all the standard setbacks.
Which is fifty feet in here. We're gonna adhere to the, you wanna talk?
And the building envelope that we're showing is large enough. Like, if you look at the, the site plan, I mean, we have those dimensions. The lot that, it's almost hundred fifty feet. So we have fifty-foot back, uh, yeah, uh, back setback, and the front is twenty-eight. So we still have, let's say, those eighty, we still have like almost seventy feet of building envelope that. We're not gonna need seventy foot, so, so just plus, all the way in the back, we have that gap, that, uh, open space between the backyard and, uh, whatever that old heated road. So they have that, it's all open. Like, some places it's over a hundred feet. That's alone. So it's like you have all that space in the back. I don't think they're gonna have any issue, so.
For eleven, exterior lighting, we're gonna leave it up to the homeowners for, uh, each of their homes to provide lighting on their homes if they like. Naturally, people will probably provide lighting on their, their garage. And most people do provide a lighting at their doors. That's customary. But what that, what that looks like, I don't know, you know? Maybe somebody wants a little bit more of contemporary mountain light versus a traditional light. We'll bring that in. Um, and that can be part of your approval process through the building department. And maybe that gets tagged as a, an administrative approval for planning to sign off on that lighting package that goes onto that house.
Talking about these homes, so let me ask you this question, uh, one that sort of raised earlier in the meeting, and I've kind of thought about this in the past myself. Um, uh, and that deals with, you know, the, uh, supposedly the coming of all the electric vehicles. Are you gonna offer to them the option of having special circuitry so that they can charge their vehicles?
Um, it's a discussion we've been having with our electricians and what we gotta add. Gotta, oh, from what I, a little bit I know about electric cars, you gotta add a dedicated fifty amp service. Mostly something to a two-
Two-twenty.
Permit?
Two-twenty.
You gotta have a two-twenty.
You don't have to, but you're gonna have it if you charge quicker if you do.
Right. So the houses have probably a two-twenty panel, right? We're gonna have four-forty panels in these houses, double panels, I could see, with two, uh, with two cars. Um, so it's, um, you know, we're early enough in the process of people say, I got two electric cars, and say, well, you're gonna need an upgrade on your electric, and we'll accommodate it. And we'll have to factor that in when we're looking at our loads of medicine. And we've been talking about this, you know, Edison is set up for a certain grid, and now all of a sudden, they're gonna have a whole lot more cars drawing off that grid that they, you know, maybe some areas, um, are, are not going to necessarily be able to support eventually.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I've also heard, you know, Cali is supposed to be completely converted to EV. And, uh, some, they've dropped out, some of the dealers have dropped out because, I guess it takes a lot of money to upgrade their whole electrical system into their, uh, dealerships and service.
Talk about fifty to a hundred cars. You're talking about a big service. And if you don't have the transformer close, it's very costly. The, um, but it's a good point, and certainly that's gonna be a, you know, a want by the, by the consumer, and we'll, uh, we as the builders, will, will accommodate that, that need. Um, let's talk about this, the stone sign. So it is our intent, uh, uh, bring the, uh, the land sync plan up, Bob.
Where, where were you at?
LP one.
One?
Yeah. Yeah, cause it says stone pure real sign. So we thought about, you know, we had a lot going on over here, and initially thought we might put this stone sign, this sign over here. We're gonna put the stone sign over there. We'll certainly provide the clear, clear, um, vision, uh, analysis for you. We'll just sign back far enough. We got enough room to do that. Um, we're gonna make it out of cinder block. We'll, we will, we will, um, uh, cap it with stone, with a, a brick, maybe a brick that takes off some of the other elements that we have. I'm sure something we feel fits. You know, we thought we wanted to be a little different on our sign. I know, you know, most of these signs, we're starting to see that cut stone in there. We thought sort of something out of a metal that would age, maybe oxidize, you know, you know?
I, I worked in a building that was designed that way, and it didn't, does not work out. It rusted through. They were forever patching it up.
We'll just do a nice-
Look at the, look at the, a, a prime example is look at the old Kresge's, uh, headquarters, uh, across from Somerset and Troy.
Uh, well, I don't recall that one, but I go down to the farms a lot. Domino Farm's got a bunch of-
Okay, then you go look-
A bunch of metal that's oxidized that, you know-
Go look at the Wolverine Tower in Ann Arbor across from Briarwood Mall. Take a look at that building.
We'll do the stone with the insert sketch of the, the, and we'll just do an insert. Um, and we'll submit the sign design to your, uh, staff and, and have, uh, have them review it, approve it. Uh, and of course, we'll meet those requirements. Um, don't have any, we don't have any uplighting, uplighting on that sign planned. I, I want it to be simple, you know? I, I, I think that, first of all, it's not gonna be that meaningful because this is gonna be called congressional court. It's not gonna be called Purcell Court. So they can plug in Purcell, and it's not gonna mean anything. So the sign, they're not gonna be looking for the Purcell sign. They're gonna be looking for correctional court, because most people just plug it into their MapQuest and gets into where they're gonna go. So I don't know how important it is to lighten it up. It'll be, you know, it's a pretty good sized sign. That's, I think we got a spec that it's six feet by three or four. I think it's four feet. So it's a twenty-four square foot sign. Single sided, set in the back.
And nobody uses MapQuest anymore.
Well, I'm aging, so I use it.
I didn't even know it was still around.
I can't see where I need to go. But my point is, they're gonna do a search engine, but, you know, they're gonna put in congressional court.
They might use a triple-A map.
Oh, my God, now we're naming ourselves.
Trip tip, trip tip.
With a highlighter on it, remember, you used to get that?
Used it from two weeks ago.
The, um, so, um, yeah, no, that's fine. Established date? Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion. Um, the, um, two thousand dollars for the township to review the cluster housing option, that's fine. Stone material. So, the, when we last talked, you wanted me to bring us some elevations of what has been done by Leo Solve. Knowing that, what we just said, it might come back to something different. I do think that the, the ranch you see there, that's a pretty sharp ranch. There's a ranch over about a million feet. That ranch might get some traction, and I won't be surprised that Leo does a couple of those. Now, it can't be that wide. That, that lot, that ranch is probably a five-dollar square foot ranch. And that's probably a hundred and twenty-five foot lot. But I could definitely see, I need to bring it down a little bit, get those tiers and that, and that's, uh, that paint and those, uh, brick work, and probably flip the garage, probably flip the garage around the back to make that thing work. But I think that you might see a couple of those. Um, I'd like the color scheme in there, too. So having said that, you know, you've got sort of got a light brick, we've got sort of a, I, I call it reclaimed brick, cause it's almost got that effect of being a, 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 an old building that is reclaimed. This is a darker brown, um, but it could be something else, you know? It could be, you know, it could be another variety of, 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 of colors. Uh, this is sort of a detail of, you know, what it could look like with a, with the asphalt chingle with more of a lighter stone accent, maybe with a red brick like this, and a, a trim, trim color of either this or a trim color of this. Here again, it comes down to the customer, what they, what they, you know, what's, what's specced out. I do wanna encourage our customers, um, to look at these type of bricks. Uh, these could be a eighteen inches off the ground to kind of accent it. I could envision this accenting the door, doing on, on a, especially the, like, the big arcs that you see on the, uh, the Colonial. This would be fabulous with that type of accent. Um, so, you know, we're gonna provide them a lot of options. Um, and, uh, you know, adhere to the township's requirements and, uh, and bring a first-class project to the community. Oh, the historical sign. So we don't have a spec on the historical sign because I understand, has, has the historical commission established what the new signs are gonna look like?
They haven't looked, they have not established a, a standard yet. But, uh, at the last meeting, uh, one of the commissioners went out and took pictures of this, of- one of the commissioners went out and took pictures of this, of the historical signs that are in the Northville development, you know, that sits behind that hotel. I don't know if you've driven back in there, but they've developed sort of a, I don't know, it's like a pergola, and they have all these historical signs that happened in different parts of, of Northville, they're not particularly at that site, but it's sort of a centralized.
Talking about in downtown, what, Northville?
No, 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 the one on, on Beck and Five.
Oh.
Behind the hotel that is going up there. So they did, you know, they kind of liked that sign, and I did get, I have asked Laura to contact Northville Township to find out the source of those signs, and she found out the source, and I've communicated with them. They told me that those signs were, are not available, they don't think that they can reproduce those for us, but she did give me two other options that looked okay, Jack Dempsey did some text for it. That hasn't been edited or anything, I think it's probably gonna have to be edited down a little bit and changed a little bit. She's just running numbers for me, I haven't gotten that information yet, and the historical commission meets next month. They meet the Thursday after this meeting every other month, so we'll find out, that's the progress of it.
Okay.
Laura, do you remember, I think they were looking at, wasn't that cost of that sign around two thousand dollars, wasn't it? Something like, something in that neighborhood, because they're trying, you know, we have to find something that's affordable for, that they, that they can afford to put later using this twenty thousand dollar payment. So they're not gonna go overboard, but they want, they're looking for something permanent, with some permanency.
Those are nice signs in Northville.
In Northville, yeah, they, they're really nice, they have a little, the photographs of, you know, the site that they're talking about is there, it's in metal, and it's the same company that does the State of Michigan historical markers, so they're, you know, good vendor.
Well, as soon as, you know, as soon as that standard is set, then we'll, you, we might be the first one to utilize that.
Yeah, well, I, I think, I think you will, I mean, I, I do like the way the placement of how you put it on this site plan, I looked at that, I think Laura's suggestion about brick or stamped concrete, something that differentiates it from the sidewalk, and the park bench is a little more inviting.
Yeah, yeah, and I think people can use a park bench going up and down the territory on their bikes to stop.
Right, I thought about that, too, you know, we're trying to, putting in the sidewalk along North Territorial, so, you know, hopefully there'll be more bikers and they'll take a break.
So, the, but I wanted to bring that up, because, you know, we don't have a detail of it, but then again, this really, in this case, it's in your court.
Okay.
Come back and tell us.
Okay.
That's it, you know, we're here for, for preliminary, we talked about this before, bringing it back for preliminary, and final, you know, if I could shortlist it, not shortlist, but I'll give you the list of what I think that still needs to be accomplished. We're gonna add the two trees within the forty-foot right way, we're gonna address the monument sign, clear vision line, do it in stone with the sketch, similar to what's been done around other projects around town. We've committed to do six pines, it could be six deciduous, or it could be a combination of both, to be placed on the, the neighbors, as I've identified on, on, on the, on my letter that I presented. The, we're, we're open to looking at the mailbox, a different spec, if you would, but, you know, one they can satisfy eight, eight homeowners there. We'll look at the other ones on that, on that, that plan, or within that website. You know, I think elevations, we've talked about it, it's, you know, I, I've gone on record and said what I think is going to be the outcome here. We'll let the designs of the customers come in, have them adhere to the code by the Plymouth Township, and, and hopefully we get a real creative mix of homes there that, that sets us apart from other developments that have been, uh, put forth in the community over the number of past years.
Just to be clear, the building materials you brought here this evening, I mean, from my opinion, they, they look acceptable, they're, but there'll be others that would be available to the folks depending on the look that they're trying to achieve, or they have an art, an architect with their.
Yeah, someone else is gonna pick it out, you know, I, I don't know if I even go as far as to tell them that we wanna have, to give us a standard, I want them to come to us and tell us what they want. Now, we will adhere to, and I might, and I'll restate this, we will adhere to that no two brick colors, no two brick types can be side by side. Here's one exception, I do envision people using this stone.
Oh, yeah.
All houses side by side, but remember, this is an accent stone, it's not the entire house. Only because there's, there's a lot of these, but to me, there's only probably a half a dozen that are really hit the market, and I mean, having this be an accent on somebody's corner coin, if you would, or on the, on the eighteen inches belt line around the house, in front of the house, I wouldn't want to restrict them for that, but we'll say this main brick can't be the same.
I have noticed on some of the new construction going on that, I don't know what it is, is the price of the brick, but some of the brick just does not look very inviting to me, there is no texture to it.
Recent homes that were bricked, supply, maybe supplies, there's some back order, there's some products that just not, you can't get a hold of today. And, you know, it always comes down to, it seems to me, in the brick world, eighty percent of the people are buying, uh, 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 basically eighty percent of the people are buying, you know, a very, twenty percent of the brick selection out there, because it just kind of separates themselves apart from, you know, these manufacturers have the right color, and people gravitate towards it.
Any questions or comments from the commission?
Anyone that wants to talk?
Pardon, is anyone here that wishes to talk about this applicant? Okay, all right, so we're looking for final site plan approval, but final, subject to final review by the Administrative Review Committee.
So it says tentative here.
The tentative and final, Laura, that you're looking for?
It is, it is tentative and final, the application was postponed at the June meeting.
Right. So are we ready for a motion?
Okay, I'll do it. Because we don't want to see Leo again do something. Maybe not, maybe at least end up this project.
You, you can bring the engineer along.
Recommend the site plan approval for the cluster option, with the cluster option for application, twenty-three ninety-three dash oh-five twenty-one for cell place, and there will be no, let's see, the indication was there will be four arborita and two summer sweet bushes added, that two additional trees will be added along the territorial entrance from, from the neighborhood to the south. Administratively, we'll handle the shared mailbox system, there will be up to, up to six evergreen or deciduous trees planted off property, depending on what the owners prefer, and in terms of building, design, and architecture, it's recognized that they will customize per the customer's request, but they will not have two brick colors the same with adjacent houses. Exterior lighting will be up to the customer, and the signage will be subject to administrative review, and as well as the entrance, including the entrance sign, and the applicant is okay with the escrow of three thousand dollars to the township.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Postel, supported by Commissioner Barberino, granting final site plan approvals, subject to set conditions, and, and final review by the Administrative Review Committee, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Okay, good luck.
Do, I'll report it to another project.
Okay, hope so. Better.
You know where Matt right now.
I clearly didn't get to it today.
I know that there was.
Oh, the owner, yeah. Yeah, I'm not here the next two days, but I have someone else working on it, so hopefully Monday morning I can review and get it to you. Not too many comments, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I will, I will do my best to get it to you soon.
I will talk to him, I'm just.
Yeah.
Let him know that.
Yeah.
It's by Monday.
Okay. Yeah, okay, sounds good.
There was one more item that I sent to the planning commission, and yes, procedurally, I understand it should have been at the beginning of the meeting, but I wasn't here because I was presenting here at the last of the, so, and I'll just discuss it, and, you know, comments potentially, or not, I'm preparing to go to contract on, well, I guess I just signed, they signed it over. Contract on four point two acres in the northwest corner of McLumpa in Ann Arbor Road. I brought it before you, early on in February of two thousand twenty-one, just as a discussion, I, I think it was on a Zoom call, maybe.
Yeah, it was a Zoom call.
Zoom that weekend, that meeting. And what my proposal would be to do is to bring it back in for an R two A zoning, an R two zone. Basically, the ability to build attached product, something as I refer to as a mid-market. I've got a fair amount of data that I'm gonna share with the planning commission when I put together my presentation. What I feel that there's a missing point here, and, and, and I'm very encouraged by to see some other apartments being built in the community, and adding, adding another housing experience for people that wanna, our, our, our younger children, that hopefully they take their first residency of living here, and then they'll buy a house when they're ready. But I also think, and, and, because we really gotta have something for everybody here, in my opinion. You know, these condos that I talk about, the site condos, they're all great, but, you know, the reality, they're eight hundred thousand dollar investment, and not everybody wants to spend eight hundred thousand dollars to, to maintain a residence in this community. And the detached product, along with the site work that's involved in these projects, which is extensive today, the cost of stormwater, on and on, forces us to build these products and have a price point that's higher than probably a larger amount of the market wants to spend. Therefore, the way we can get some economies, if you would, off of the site work, is to put more units on the property, attached product, still something with a master bedroom on the first floor, two-car garage, a lot of traditional elements to maybe the home that they're living in now, with the exception that the master bedrooms on the first floor, unless they have a pickup or a ranch. But something that they can finally, you know, at seventy-five years old, sell their house in Country Club Village, sell their house in Plymouth Commons, their house in Huntington Park, Ridgewood West, Woodlawn North, South, all these bedroom communities are built thirty-five years ago, that the people have aged out to a point where their children are gone, and they want another, they want to maintain the residence in this community. I got an example right now, I've got a lady that's selling her house in Huntington Park, and we're looking at homes in Northville, because, in Canton, because there's just absolutely no attached product, she doesn't want to spend five or six hundred thousand dollars. So the only way I can bridge that gap between the market and, and what a customer like that wants is to develop a product that is, is a little bit more dense on a site such as, such as McLumpa, and I refer to as a mid-market. Having said that, it's an expensive proposition to bring a rezoning before the planning commission, from a risk standpoint. And I'm, I'm finally bearing that risk, but I just wanted, you know, here, if the economy, the planning commission has any thoughts about, you know, forget about whether it's McLumpa and Ann Arbor Road, you know, if there's an acknowledgement that there's a need for a mid-market product of three hundred fifty to four hundred fifty thousand dollars for our community, residents in our community, that's enough for me, because then I know that I can kind of tailor my presentation and my, and my information to, 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 to kind of, to provide the information to the, the planning commission so that they can take that.
Well, I think it's difficult to have an immediate response to you, because it's something we would have to reflect on, and, you know, if you wanted to, I mean, I don't want to turn this into an informal meeting, you know, and have things sort of preset, but I don't know if you, you know, I, I never was really a big fan of attached units, but if you have a lot of information that's generic regarding that, certainly personally me, I would look at it. That's not to say I would oppose it either, I just, I'm a little uncertain about that kind of an approach, but certainly even the master plan has said that we want to offer, you know, to the public, you know, variety of housing in Plymouth Township, and I think we have that over the years, you can look, I mean, there's a lot of price points, you know, in the township, everything from, you know, Plymouth Hills, all the way up to Country Club Village, or any of the other more upscale units here, so.
There is for the current demand.
Right.
Point is, is that the biggest population of the baby boomers are, are starting to retire, and forget about, about the baby boomers, because they're only under sixty-two, I'm talking about the seventy-five to eighty-year-olds that are still living in Country Club Village.
Well, actually, I talked to, I talked to an individual earlier today that told me that they were ready to sell their house, but they wanted to stay in Plymouth, but they didn't want to spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars doing it for a house that was smaller than the one they currently have. So.
And, you know, and yes, we got the Country Club Village, the detached over there, and, yeah, second, I'll call it final phase of Country Club Village. Nice product, but there's not much available, I mean, at any time, they only got two or three units. So you've got a lot more customers than there are products, and, yeah, maybe twenty years ago, you had enough to satisfy the demand because you didn't have that ancient population, but now you have that ancient population that are all saying, you know, I'm still in good health, I'm not ready to go to independent living, I want that mid-market experience and, and do an attached product. Now, when I say attached product, I'm not talking about stacked flats or anything like that, I'm talking about two or three units together, you know, separate entrances, nobody lives above you, nobody lives below you, your separate garage, separate entrance. You see a lot of it in Northville, you know, you see it in Canton, we do have some in the community. They did build over off of Sheldon and Ann Arbor Road there on the north side years ago. That's an attached product with master bedrooms on the first floor.
And off of Northville Road by the freeway.
Those are townhouses, those are townhouses, nice product, but not, you know, and I do think there are some master bedrooms on the first floor and some of that product.
No, I think they're all ranches.
You think they are?
Gateway.
Is that the name of it?
Gateway, Cross and Village Green.
Uh, no, Independence Village.
Oh, right, Cross and Independence Village, Gateway.
Is that what it's called? I forget, yeah, it is Gateway. Gateway.
Well, Mike, you know, I'll put together the studies, I would like to have a discussion, maybe informally, and put together the information. I'd like to go down on this road, but I don't, if, if, if something that the, the planning commission or the board is just, you know, they feel like they've got enough of this product, I would respect that as well, but I think, you know, I hold myself out as a pretty experienced expert in the business, and this is what I do day in, day out, and, and I'm just kind of. and I'm just kind of gauging, I don't want to build a product that's not gonna be successful anyways. I can't afford the loss. So I gotta be right also. And I really think that, you know, talking with my neighbors, and I seen this firsthand with, when I built Tuscany, I had a bunch of neighbors who thought they were gonna buy a condo there. And when I told them the price point, I said, "Well, thanks, we're not gonna spend that kind of money." I said, you know, it's just a.
Yeah, but originally you said that was the price point.
It was, until our costs come back in, until I figured I had to haul 30,000 yards.
I, I'm just pointing that out. You told us that.
Right, you're absolute. I thought, I originally was gonna take the product to market at 650. And I think I went on record. But I'll tell you, well, my costs coming on my dirt work, my costs coming on the site work, everything you get up above, everything that comes about when you develop a site. And the cost came in construction, we kind of hit it at the time that, you know, construction costs were going up. And, um, prices got driven up.
But I told you the last time you were here.
Same thing could happen, and, yeah.
I told you the last time you were here, the price of lumber is going down. You said from, you know, and it is going down. It's still higher than what it was last, you know, pre-pandemic, but it is coming down.
Yeah, it is.
And I agree that costs could go up even on a debt, but I would completely admit, but I do know that by having more units, that I can balance those costs across more than one unit.
Well, that is a, excuse me, I'll, that, that is a key point, because I've, I've had comments even from commissioners and even some Board of Trustees members, that these houses are so expensive. And so there's a concern, and, and even today, then, you know, the neighbor still wants to live here, but doesn't want to pay, you know, a very high price for a product that is smaller in size than what they currently have.
I agree. And I do think.
Commissioner Barberina has.
Going on four hours here. You're not winning any hands here. You're going on four hours.
Thank you all.
No, wait, there's one more comment.
Motion to adjourn.
No, just a moment. Um, have you had a chance to look at the master plan, or proposed master plan?
Yeah.
Okay, we'd love your comments, because when you're, to me, when you talk about things like this, um, we're governed by our master plan. And if what you're talking about is something that you want to see in this township, then we need that input into our master plan, because that's how we can make things happen. It's a lot harder for us to get an application down the road saying, "Hey, can you change zoning?" And we're like, well, we have to follow our master plan. So this is the time that we need that input.
Yeah, but I was.
Pardon?
I introduced you back in February. Your master plan, this, this test plan is for wrong conclusion at this point.
It's out for, I mean, it hasn't been adopted.
Listen, I would love to introduce you to the master plan. I wanted to do that anyway, but I was told that, that was not the process.
Isn't it out for comment right now, or a new master plan? Mm-hmm. And it has been adopted, so that's just my, um,
No, and I appreciate your.
My suggestion there, because it's a lot easier for us to follow the master plan than to try to go against it. I think we'd all agree on that, right?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
That's why we have it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Good night.
So we have the, uh, monthly report.
Um, so we have a, our joint meeting's been established on August 24th. Just wanted to bring that to our attention, that we have the joint Board of Trustees and Planning Commission meeting on August 24th. That'll be very exciting.
Okay.
And the, the Board of Trustees will be considering the Northville rezoning that we just recommended this evening, or that you recommended. So I think that'll be nice, that the commission will be there with the trustees to kind of see that through.
Okay, good. And then are there any materials available for tomorrow night's work session, or will there be?
Not that I have right now.
Okay.
From the applicant. If, if I have anything tomorrow, I'll.
The topic again?
Email them out, of course.
Oh, yeah.
It's not here. Um, okay. So will we have a corn tomorrow night?
Uh, Bill Pratt, Bill Pratt, well, yeah, Keith won't be here. Bill Pratt won't be here.
Right.
Bob Ostendorf will be here.
Will be here, okay.
But, and I think everyone else will be here.
Okay, so we'll still have five.
No, no, I'm on the fence now.
All right, just wanted to make sure that enough people were gonna be here tonight to make it worthwhile.
I talked to Bob earlier. He just got, he got swamped at work, but he said he's gonna be here tomorrow.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. I move we adjourned.
Well, no, we're not.
Oh, sorry.
So any other questions on this? Okay. Any comments from the commission?
Yeah, Kenny reminded me that, um, but like, we gotta be careful about shuffling papers in front of the microphone, because it, it comes across on the video, and I think we're streaming on YouTube tonight.
You told me we're live.
Well, that's live streaming.
Oh, yes, that's right, on YouTube. Yeah, I was thinking of the website.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Everybody else set? Is there a motion for adjournment?
I move we adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Commissioner Barberina, supported by Commissioner Dorchevitz, to adjourn at 10:55. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll hope this motion carries.